Welcome to the regular session portion of the July 8th Board of Education meeting. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Have we got Missy back online too? I can't see everybody.
I'm sorry, Kate. Yes, we're in.
All right, yeah, because we can't start without you.
Yeah, work anytime.
All right, we're going to stand up. I don't know how it works last time when all the mics on, whatever, as long as we're all participating together with the pledge and standing off to the side of your camera. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to very proud and grateful friends and one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, liberty, and justice.
All right. Our first order of business as usual is to approve the consent agenda, which I will make a note of here is, where does it say? Items of routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the Board of Education to focus on other items that don't like the agenda. Consent by any member of the Board and considered separately if necessary. All the details are in Board Docs for anybody who wants to learn more about some of these items or approving our consent, where we want to be as transparent as possible, but we also want to be efficient with our time as possible. Is there a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
One second. Dr. Long, in seconds. Any further comments or questions for anyone? No, Missy, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Almanza?
Fernando Almanza, aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Kelly Alter, aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Kate Caccarella, aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Shelley Jarno, aye.
Dr. Long?
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Michelle Stecker, aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas?
Lucila T. Varcunas, aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody, for rejoining us. I felt like I was back in high school again. Quick, eating the dinner in fifteen minutes and cooking it and eating it. So we do have some public participation that was submitted during the window. We appreciate the public's understanding and patience with these online processes, and hopefully they're effective. We'll turn it over to our secretary, Ms. Stecker, to read these out and share with us. Unfortunately, we don't have any public discussion, but your comments are listened to and absorbed and reflected on by the Board, and if we need to get back to you, we will. But I have a feeling we're going to be incorporating these into our COVID-19 planning. Ms. Stecker?
Thank you. And then just one other reminder, we do have a limit of three minutes per public comment, so we have a timer running back at the district office, and I will get going with our first letter here. And this one comes to us from Genevieve Sansone. Dear Board of Education, I am extremely concerned about returning to school this fall, and I'm sure many other teachers are as well. I am a passionate educator and love being in the classroom with my students. I love watching students grapple with a math problem. I love seeing the look on their faces when they finally find a solution that works and hearing the excitement in their voices when they can explain their thinking. I love building relationships with kids and getting to know them and all their quirks. However, I am scared to return to my classroom this fall. My fears are for the health and safety of my school-aged family, for my students and their families, for my colleagues and their families, and for the entire community as we live through this pandemic. Most likely, opening schools will cause the COVID-19 virus to spread. I understand that the death rate is low, around four to five percent, but that is five people out of every hundred people. Which of our beloved colleagues and family members are we willing to sacrifice? Not one life is worth risking. Each day, we learn new information about COVID-19. Children can and are contracting this illness. Long-term effects of this virus are still unknown. Will survivors suffer from reduced lung capacity? Will there be lasting cognitive damage? What other unknown long-term effects will survivors have to endure? Imagine being the child that brings the virus to school and spreads it. The stigma for introducing this virus will be long-lasting as well, especially if someone dies. If we are asked to return to in-person teaching, what safety measures will be put into place? Will we have masks, face shields, and protective clothing? Considering the large budget cuts to education, what funds will be allocated for safety equipment for staff and students? Will there be funds for temperature checks and testing for the virus? Will the cleaning and sanitation process be maintained and paid for? Will there be emotional support for staff and students working with high stress and anxiety levels? Will there be enough staff to have a reduced number of students in each classroom? What is the safe number of students to have in each classroom? Can we ensure six feet of distance in the classrooms? What does it look like to teach and learn at a six-foot difference? So there, since there will be nothing normal or familiar about what we will have to do when an outbreak occurs, will we have the tools to be more effective online teachers? We must think outside the box to provide support for our students when this happens. There are so many unanswered questions about how to return to school safely. It doesn't seem that anyone or any school district has the answers. I hope that the severity of this problem makes us all pause and take our time to determine the safest plan possible. I hope that decisions are moved free from political pressures to pass ballot initiatives, and they're made with the health and safety of our community at the forefront. As a parent and an educator, I want the best possible scenario for our kids and staff that will ensure them a long and healthy life. If a safe plan for return to school cannot be created, please do not push our school community into an uncertain situation. Wow, exactly three minutes. Thank you, Genevieve Sansone, fourth, fifth grade teacher from Edwards Elementary School. Our next letter is titled "Reopening with Integrity" from Kelsey Wright. Hello, I am beyond excited to be going back to school. I miss all of my students and fellow educators. I am a proud specials teacher. In the proposed plan, I see the following concerns and would like to see them addressed. First, it seems our social distance procedures are limited only to the classroom. If students are eating lunch in large groups with multiple cohorts without masks, doesn't that defeat the purpose of distancing in classrooms? How will you make social distance procedures in the lunchroom more effective and safe? Second, it is my understanding that students will remain in their homeroom cohort with their teachers and travel to specials as usual. This leaves specialists vulnerable to a broader possibility of exposure than a classroom teacher. I have an upwards of 300-plus students moving through my classroom any given week. Cleaning procedures will be strenuous and ineffective, classroom learning time will diminish, and the learning material will have a higher rate of exposure than a contained classroom. What are possibilities to have specials contained in the homeroom class as well? Next, I'd like to point out an issue with the term cohort. It is misleading to call a classroom of 25 students a cohort when that is an average class size. Please clarify how the cohort differs from our past classroom setup and what makes it safer for students and educators. Finally, it was my understanding that in consolidating June Creek Elementary, there would be an opportunity for smaller class sizes. If there is going to be an influx of students and up to 25 in a classroom, how are we prioritizing the health and educational needs of students? I'm a proud educator and proud to work for Eagle County Schools. I know these efforts towards new policies are no easy feat and do not come without some margin of error. The world is changing, and we have a special opportunity to pursue an innovative educational model and rewrite education with students and educator health and well-being at the forefront while being high achieving. In closing, please address the following questions. How will you make social distance procedures in the lunchroom more effective and safe? What are possibilities to have specials be contained in the homeroom classroom as well? How does the cohort model differ from our past classroom setup and what makes it safer for students and educators? And with the influx of students from June Creek and larger class sizes, how are you going to further prioritize the health and educational needs of students? Thank you, Kelsey Wright Elementary Art Educator. Our next letter comes to us from Sherri Rollins. Hello, Eagle County School District Board. First and foremost, thank you for your service. I am wondering what plan there is to meet social, emotional needs for students, their peers, and teachers who must leave in-person learning due to COVID-related reasons. Basically, who will counsel children who are sad, scared, or emotionally distressed because friends are not allowed at school for an extended period of time? Thank you, Sherri Rollins, Edwards Elementary, first grade teacher. And we've got one last letter here, and it comes to us from Kimberly Bennecke. Good afternoon, Board members. I am a parent of a first and fifth grader at Home State Peak, and I'm an eighth-grade math teacher and teacher leader at Home State Peak. Home State Peak is a very special school in our district. About 11 years ago, for financial reasons, the district and school board decided to combine Meadow Mountain Elementary and Minteron Middle School into the old Battle Mountain High School campus. We constantly struggle for the district to understand and support our very different needs as a pre-K to eighth school. We are not an elementary school or middle school. We are a pre-K to eighth school. This makes us very unique and large. We have over 600 students ages two to 14, and the expectation is that we are 100% open in August, both elementary and middle schools. I have some concerns. High schools are going with the hybrid model because of the number of students and wanting to limit possible contacts. Eagle County's other elementary and middle schools will hover around 300 students each, not HPS. Home State Peak would have more students in our building than any district should, any district school, my apologies, including both high schools. With 600 students and over 50 staff, that is a lot of possible contacts. We also have several staff that would interact with multiple grade levels across both schools. Our specialists would see six different grade levels per day, 150 students per day. The logistics of how to move 600 students around in the building with one main thoroughfare are nearly impossible to navigate. Multiple grade levels share the same hallways. We cannot have 600 students sequestered in their classrooms for seven and a half hours. We will need to move around the building and go outside. We must be able to keep students and staff healthy without the feeling of being imprisoned. Some of our morning buses carry both elementary and middle school students. Getting 600 students to school on buses will literally take hours. After-school busing also needs to be considered. If buses have to make several trips for one route because of limitations on the number of students on the bus, that will leave many students at home well after dismissal time. How late do these children get home? Who monitors these children while still at school? Our seventh and eighth grade advanced math classes could not take place with the cohorts as they are based on dual-language classes. Ultimately, 600 students plus 50 staff members with multiple shared spaces, buses, hallways, cafeteria, gymnasium, is absolutely too many people to be in one place at one time. Thank you, Kim Bennecke, Home State Peak School, parent and teacher.
Thank you very much, Michelle, and thank you for submitting those comments. Appreciate the input of our staff, and we will take those letters and incorporate them into the future planning as we are going over this draft at length for planning for next year. As Superintendent Qualman has said, there's going to be a lot of changes and adjustments as we get more information from epidemiology and as we get more feedback and input from teachers and staff. So with that, we will turn it over to the superintendent for his report.
Thanks, Madam President. Can you hear me okay? Good. I just want to comment to those four teachers who sent in public feedback. We'll work on those questions in our district leadership team meeting on Monday, when I meet with all the folks that make up that team, and we'll send responses to you next week. So we appreciate the outreach and thoughtful questions, and they deserve thoughtful answers, so we'll get back to you next week with those. Before I get into the report, I just wanted to acknowledge some news that we've received in the last 24 hours. One of our students went missing about a month ago, young Sebastian Rodriguez Castro. And for the last month, many of our professionals and community members have assisted in searching for him, especially that week immediately after he went missing. And he's been on everybody's minds a lot in the last month, and searchers just did find his body in the last day, which brings a bit of closure to the family, but it certainly still creates a new level of pain for them. So we just want to acknowledge to the family that they remain in our hearts and in our prayers in this tragic time for them, and they're going to need a lot of our love and a lot of our support as they continue to process his loss. So I just wanted to lead with that. In light of all the things that we're trying to sort out and plan to keep school going, we're still a community, and it's important that we never forget that, and we need to come together, and that was one of those instances where we really did see the community come together and show tremendous support. So our love and our prayers go out to Sebastian's family. So with that, I'll move into my presentation. Join, if you could go to the first slide, please. Thank you. Regarding improvements to the EAP, EAP stands for the Employee Assistance Program. This is a program that supports our employees in the event that they need emotional support, if they need to talk to a counselor or a therapist about anything that's happening in their lives. This has always been a benefit that we've provided, and in the past, we were able to offer three free sessions through the EAP, and I'm happy to announce that we have doubled that for this coming school year. So the EAP now offers six free sessions, and we've also added teletherapy to the EAP. So not only have we expanded the number of visits, but we've expanded the modality of visits to just continue to demonstrate our commitment to mental health and to the hearts of our staff members. So thank you to the benefits team for their work on that, and we'll get information out to staff as the school year gets started on how to access that new benefit. This next item on here, Planning for School Year 2021, that, if I could make it a bigger font, I would. That has taken up a tremendous amount of my time in the last few weeks and will continue to, and you know, I anticipate for the next year, and that's okay. This is the job that we've signed up for, and we'll do it to the best of our ability. But meeting with ad team and getting input from all our principals and directors has been invaluable. Levels meetings have been a great opportunity for principals to share ideas about their specific level concerns, and then most recently, conversations with teachers through the negotiations process have also opened my eyes to some new concerns. So I appreciate their work and their suggestions and know that this is a work in progress. We're all in this together, and we'll continue to develop solutions collaboratively. Additionally, as I mentioned previously in the work session, I did participate in panel discussions. We had over 100 participants in those, and that was made up primarily of questions posed by community members, which we then developed answers to and presented in a panel discussion. I had a meeting yesterday with a representative from Stedman, particularly the Stedman Philip on Research Institute, and they are looking to expand some of their student opportunities to include remote access, which is great in our time of COVID. We have dozens of students who visit the Research Institute every year, learn what it means to be a professional scientist or medical provider who's engaged in research. But in talking to them yesterday, we're endorsing their efforts to expand into remote learning opportunities, which would give our kids increased access in the event of COVID restrictions on field trips. But it also opens up the institute to, basically, anybody in the state of Colorado can do virtual tours or access their remote learning programs. So happy to partner with them in that. I'm also working on the Safe and Resilient Schools training. This is a training Melissa mentioned earlier that many of our staff members are engaged in. I definitely support the work. It's important that I understand that language and the content and incorporate that into the strategic plan of the district and my language that I use when I'm talking to principals and to teachers and parents, to make sure that we have that consistency and continuity throughout the district of valuing the hearts of our students, the social, emotional wellness of our students, their inclusion and respect in classrooms. So I am finding that engaging work, and I appreciate Katie and Melissa's efforts to bring that to us and Eagle Valley Behavioral Health's support to get our teachers paid, as well as the additional grants from CDE to get them paid to engage in that summer work. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all the extra work. I know the planning for next year is a lot more work than it should be, it always is. So Board Reports, we'll run through here alphabetically. Mr. Almanza, are you ready?
I am. Thank you. Now I, I'm going back to writing my things down because then I forget, but, sorry. Sorry about that. Let's see, so some exciting news. I've been working with Communities That Care, and I represent Mountain Youth, wear my new shirt, but we've been working on a project that has been in the oven for quite a while now, and I'm very excited that it's coming back to the community, and it's going to be out here shortly, so I'm very excited not to say more for it, but that's one of the things. Another one is, I just had a meeting, my first in-person meeting in months with Jess Christensen with the Graduated Driver Licensing Laws, and we're planning on either a hybrid or a mix of GDL classes for the students. Some of you have seventh graders or had seventh graders last year, might have seen me or the students, just teaching to the students about GDL. So I'm very excited to bring that back. Throughout COVID, I've been working with the Domestic Violence Hotline with Bright Future Foundation, and now that I'm on that topic, a huge shout-out to Bright Future just because they've been dealing with a lot of calls throughout. So they're just doing a great job right now, so kudos to them. Also, Brian, my buddy with Bright Future mentors, I haven't seen him in person for a while, so he's still in my heart, and I really hope that I can see him sooner in person and go out and do things again, but there's that one. Throughout, what was it, last week, I became Mental Health First Aid certified or recertified for teaching hybrid classes, so soon I'm going to be helping out with the hybrid version of Mental Health First Aid rather than in-person, just to accommodate for the COVID. And then I will be becoming QPR, Question, Persuade, Refer instructor as well here shortly, so those are in the process still. Let's see, I met with Sonia, the founder of Heart's Rain yesterday, and we're starting a new peer-to-peer services soon, so we're going to be helping out even more of the community, reach out for help, and then help them out referring to other resources. So I'm very excited for that. And then lastly, I'm working on getting my Heroes in the Shadows project, hybrid version of it, and continue to educate the community, especially to emphasize the importance that our first responders bring to the community, and I know it's a sensitive topic, but I'm focusing on making sure that we understand how grateful we should be for our first responders. Other than that, that's about my report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Almanza. Ms. Alter, you're next.
Mr. Almanza is always such a busy man. He's hard to follow. The Saturday before the Fourth of July, Tessa Kirshner and I, among many others, set up stations around the valley to try to get signatures for Fair Tax Colorado. Tessa and I were actually in Val Village and were able to get, I don't know, maybe 25 signatures. Obviously, there's a lot of non-Corado folks in the village. And at the time, we were hopeful that there would actually be the ability to sign the petition electronically. The governor had sort of made a ruling on that. It was overturned by the courts, so we're sort of back to the drawing boards and do need the physical petition actually signed to get that on the November ballot. So super important, so hopefully, everybody listening and everybody out there will find a ballot. I think if you go to the Education Foundation, it tells you, I think Tessa has a ballot outside of her house at the signing station, but you can get that information on the Education Foundation's website. And other than that, just taking care of my family and enjoying summer, and yeah, like I said, Mr. Almanza, it's hard to follow up.
Great, thank you very much. I'll make you feel better because I passed optimal my work here, and I appreciate Mrs. Jarno taking care of some of my duties as stepping up as Vice President, a very capable lieutenant. I was able to be with my daughter in Durango. I got her back here. We've been to, as I was glancing through my calendar, multiple doctor's appointments too, so it's been a little exhausting around here, but I was able to listen, while I was down in Durango, to the Spanish informational meeting, and I hope, one of my questions is, I hope that even though people weren't able to attend, since it was a Friday evening, that since we recorded it and posted it, that people were able to access that information in Spanish, you know, at their convenience during the next week as part of our outreach. And I'm just really honored to be part of this team, and with all this hard work we're doing to try to get things back with students being safe and instructors without compromising too much instruction. And it's going to be a really challenging balance. My daughter reminded me as I came down here, and she said, "Just remember, the best decision is the one that makes nobody happy." So when we're done, if we have managed to aggravate everybody and frustrate everybody and nobody has what they want, it's probably about the right course of action. The people who are, you know, won't come to school because it's not safe enough, and people who won't come to school because we have to wear masks, somewhere, those people are going to have to find some middle ground where we're going to do what the experts and a lot of really smart people together in rooms are thinking that is going to be the best compromise for the safety and the education of our young people. And so I appreciate all the work that everyone is putting in on the team at the district and the staff that's writing in to us and the parents who are contributing. It's really takes, it's a community effort, and I appreciate everybody helping and pitching in and working together for a solution that is not going to be perfect for anybody, but hope to keep our kids safe and keep them learning at the same time. So who's next? Mrs. Jarno?
Yeah, I had a slower couple of weeks, but I didn't attend, I did attend one of the info meetings, also the Spanish one, which I got out of it what I could, and I was amazed at how long it went and how many good questions that people came up with. I also had a few CASB responsibilities, and I've joined, they are creating a new equity task force or committee, and they had great response from the board members, so we will start meeting in a couple of weeks. But I thought it was interesting, given what we've done here in Eagle County. I do feel like we're one step ahead, and that's about it.
Great, thank you for all your work. Dr. Long?
Hi, I had a pretty slow couple of weeks as well. Did attend in-person the one at Battle Mountain on the sixth, June 25th, Thursday, and it was, I think it's a great opportunity to let people know we do want to listen, we do want to hear your voice, and I think it was very well attended, and I think by the end of it, I hope that the community felt that their questions were listened to and answered, and the ones that we couldn't get an answer for, you know, we're working on and will definitely let people know, but I think that's a great thing for the community to know, that we do want to listen. If you want to let us know, we have to, we have to work together on it. And the only other thing that's going on for me, of course, at CMC, we're converting all of our classes to one of three models similar to the high school, face-to-face for limited classes. Most will be flex synchronous mode, where you have to be in the classroom at the same time as the teacher, and then some are strictly asynchronous online model, where you may see the teacher or you may not, but you'll always get feedback from the instructor in a certain amount of time, usually 48 to 72 hours. During this last time, last week as well, we heard from our, the president of CMC, that we have become a Hispanic-serving institution. This has to do with institutions of higher education. It means that our total population is 25% Hispanic or more. So what that does is it opens up grant opportunities for our college to provide extra programming, extra educational opportunities, also to have institutional stability and program quality. So we're, because we are mostly a Hispanic-serving institution, according to these guidelines, we're able to offer more opportunities to reach out to those groups and serve them in a way at the collegiate level that we haven't been able to before, and that's something we've been on the cusp of for a long time, but we just passed it. So that's something great that's going on at CMC, and my family is doing very well. I feel like we're getting low cabin fever. We like to get out and do some things, so we'll be planning a camping trip. We like to get out and do some things. So we'll be planning a camping trip soon. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Stecker?
Good evening. So similar to Mr. Almanza, I've been involved with the Communities That Care work. And the particular project area that I'm helping some of our local students lead is around recruiting and rewarding young people who serve in coalitions around the community and who serve in advising roles. And it's been really interesting work to hear directly from these students on what incentives they think are most appealing to them and their peers and, and just exploring ways that we can boost that level of involvement for any young person that's interested. Also got to listen in on one of the public input sessions last week. It's amazing that that was less than a week ago. It feels like a month ago with how these days continue on. But I just am really grateful for everyone that submitted questions and then listened into those sessions to, to voice their opinions and learn about our process. Also, last week, Mountain Youth hosted a panel to wrap up Pride Month. And it featured a number of different residents that identify as LGBTQ. And that included a couple of our students and alum. So it was really a great treat to get to hear them share really honestly about their stories and their experiences and advice they have for other peers, parents, educators that are wanting to support. So thank you to those brave young people for sharing their stories. And then lastly, similarly to Superintendent Qualman, have also been continuing on with the Safe and Resilient Schools course through CU. I am a little more than halfway through and it's been a great experience to learn, be reminded of some of the terminology, hear from the experts in the field throughout the country. And then also to take that learning each week and engage in dialogue with other prevention partners in the community. Just like Mr. Qualman said, it's so important for us to speak the same language and have that common understanding. So that's a lot of what's kept me busy. And then this Sunday, we have an event in Avon and then virtually called Heart of Vale Valley's Youth. And it's focusing on, there's a number of speakers and free workshops around using arts and creativity as a coping mechanism for stress and anxiety and loss. So really looking forward to that. It's going to be one of our first bigger in-person events happening in the community and, and again, virtually as well. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your work out there in the community. And then this brings us finally, but last but not least, Mrs. Tiva Kunis.
Thank you. It's been really quiet around here also. I did attend one of the parent input meeting. Thanks, everybody, for their comments, input questions. And other than that, just trying to keep the kids busy and happy. Lots of campings and just enjoying the summer. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
That's good. We can't ask for much more than enjoying the, doesn't get much better than Colorado summer. Where does that bring us to here? Old and new business, which we are going to talk about again when we do the, looking at the year at a glance, agenda planning. But we'll have more return to school planning, housing master plan, the 3A renewal discussion. We have some time before we have to commit to putting 3A on the ballot. So we'll be talking about that one more time as we get a little closer to that deadline. We'll have our standard monitoring reports that come up on a regular basis. They're scheduled here. Student results, fiscal management, school safety. Is there anything anybody else has that wants to be added on to our agendas for the future? You can also address this at the Year in a Glance part of the meeting. Everybody good? We'll just move on then to, we're going to continue now the work we were doing before. Finishing through the planning and making sure that we have enough time to discuss this. I don't know if we're going to actually, we don't actually broadcast the work sessions of the meeting. It's just this regular portion. But a lot of the work that has been done that they promoted, probably by the time we come back in August, that draft plan will be a little bit more affirmed up with all the extra information we're getting from the state epidemiologists. So I think it's really important work to walk through the draft several times as we're working through this next six weeks before school. Kids actually come back to work out the bugs by talking. They're putting up this, the presentation now. We'll just pick up where we left off. Thank you, everybody, for tuning back in. And then we'll have plenty of time for questions. Make note of the time. And over to Superintendent Qualman.
Yeah. So where we left off in our presentation with Assistant Superintendent Melissa Riewelkuon. And we were about to start talking more about streamlining our practices in the event of transitioning to remote learning. And I think we were going to hear from Tenille Wallace, Executive Director of Technology, as well as Ann Heckman, who is our Educator Quality Director. So I will turn it over to them.
Hi, thank you. So this one, just a reminder, you know, we're going through. So when we made the quick transition to remote learning this spring, we weren't aware of all the situations of our students and families with regards to remote learning. And I think Phil spoke to that right before we went on break. But with some time for preparation for this school year, we'll be working with our families to ensure that we understand the unique challenges and strengths of each of our households for their capacity for remote learning. And we'll be providing training and information to our families at the beginning of the school year to outline those expectations for student participation and work completion. And the one-on-one personalized devices will assist us with the ease of accessibility if we're in a hybrid model. Students should also be able to download what they need at school to actively participate with the remote portion of the learning, even if they do encounter internet issues. So those are some of the things that we're working on. Well, oh, you know, go to the next slide. Sorry, this was the slide. Okay, no, sorry. Oh, am I on the wrong one? I'm sorry. Yeah, go to the next one and then I'll come back to this one. But it's the 37. Go back one more. Oh, okay. No, we're on the right one. I'm sorry. I was, I looked up and I got lost. Good. There we are. So with the struggles that we had with the remote format, now even if they do encounter those issues, we're going to expect all students to actively participate in their classes and complete the work. And we will individually accommodate and adjust for students that have struggles with the remote format if we do go remote. And then a demonstration of effort and learning will be expected for all students. And if the synchronous versus asynchronous learning is a problem for some of our students, again, we have the district option for students and families that would like to be self-paced. And that would be our online learning experience of World Academy. And then one of our challenges with our quick conversion again to remote learning was we did not have very clear expectations around the synchronous and asynchronous learning. When we talk about synchronous learning, it's when all students are engaged at the same time with the teacher, whether that be in a remote atmosphere or in person. And we're going to be working on a flow of synchronous learning to ensure that students are able to engage and don't have conflicts with their other classes. We're going to try to maximize the online bandwidth with these schedules as well. And we're engaging with pilot groups in flip classroom training this summer, provided by our Learning Services and EdTech departments. And all the teaching staff will receive some training on the flip classroom this fall when they come back. And that's going to allow us for synchronous and asynchronous instruction in all formats to maximize our in-person time with our students. And then the next piece in that streamlining, no, no, it's still the same slide, sorry, is I'd like to introduce, I think she's on, Tenille Wallace is our new Technology Director. And she was going to talk a little bit about the simplification of our learning platforms for the ease of our families.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me on tonight. I wanted to give a huge shout out to the Technology Department and all the hard work that they've done. At the beginning of the summer, they collected all of the devices from the entire district, cleaned, serviced them and have them ready to go for the upcoming school year. And that was a huge task, but they'd done a great job. And one of the things that came through loud and clear on the survey was a common consistent platform so students and parents could access the information that students were asked to be doing. So our EdTech team has created a template in Schoology, one for elementary, one for secondary, that they will work on sharing with all teachers, that will have a consistent format. So there is a folder for August and inside the folder, a week for each week that students are in school, color-coded, marked with days off. So it will give every teacher the same framework, same framework in Schoology to follow. So as a parent, if you have a student in multiple grade levels and multiple levels, it should be very easy for you to follow along with exactly where your students are supposed to be and what they're supposed to be working on. As well, our team is collaborating with our translator, translators to provide videos for parents on multiple pieces of the technology, Schoology and other platforms that we will be using in the upcoming school year. And we'll have those ready to go to share with the schools so they can share them with their families for the upcoming school year.
Thanks. Thank you, Tenille. And again, you know, in order to make sure that everyone's prepared for the hybrid model or remote learning, we are going to work with all of our schools to get a common training that we'll do for all parents, provided initially the slides and the presentation of the district format. And then let the schools individually be able to personalize those for their families to make sure that at a moment's notice, everyone will understand how and how to connect and what the schedules are and how to use the online platform if that's necessary. And then the next slide, I believe, unless you have questions around that, Katie was going to talk about the next slide.
Hello again. So this slide is talking about graduation requirements. So the number of credits that are required to reach graduation is a local school district decision. Our graduation requirements are pretty robust compared with some other districts. So I think we have a little bit of wiggle room on this. But the gist of it is that if we stay with the hybrid model this year, we, some students may not have the opportunity because of the AB day and how some classes will be offered. And they may be short on their elective credit. So we will just, we'll need to keep an eye on this and see how long the hybrid model goes on. But if we are doing the hybrid model for most of the year, the Board of Education will need to consider reducing the credit requirements by one elective credit. And that could be an addendum to our policy that outlines our elective credits. We could also put a sunset to that so that, you know, it, it applies for kids who are in the hybrid model. And as those kids age out, our requirements would go back to our original requirements, God willing, that were not in this COVID situation and hybrid learning forever. So that's something we'll have to keep an eye on. Also, during the break, I checked my email and at the state level, they, there are some new graduation guidelines that were set to be implemented for this next year's seniors, the graduating class of 2021. And that included some cut points on SAT, ACT, Accuplacer, ADVAB. There's a series of different ways that kids could meet those requirements. And that's been in the work for many years. We knew that was coming. That's not a surprise. However, comma, the CDE just sent out an email, which I said I got during the dinner break, that they are pushing those requirements back a year. So those will not be required because a lot of those tests, the SAT and ACT, although they are being administered in the fall, they were not available in the spring. And so they're pushing those requirements back by one year. So those will apply to the class of 2022 instead of 2021. But in terms of the number of credits, that is a local decision. So also in terms of the number of credits, the Office of College and Career Readiness, throughout the remote learning, we had a number of town hall meetings and they were very lenient. They made sure to make the point that the number of credits is absolutely a local issue and that they encouraged school boards to look at that and make sure that kids are not stuck in a position where they don't meet that simply because of the way that remote learning or in the hybrid model is being offered. So I feel like we have great guidance on that from, from the Colorado Department of Education. Any questions?
I have one question, and this might be not the appropriate place. Do we, is there any thoughts of what's going to happen next year in terms of grading practices, particularly at the high school level? I've sort of seen things about evaluations, but I haven't seen anything, whether we're going to continue with going back to a more traditional grading model or whether there's still be some lingering, or do we know yet?
Well, I think we've been having those conversations at the different levels. I think that a lot of our, it's sort of a silver lining of COVID silver lining, I guess, that for some of our schools, those conversations are moving ahead at a faster pace because of the remote learning and the hybrid model. And so I don't, I can't tell you exactly what that will look like at this point, but those conversations are actually happening in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
I have a question. The, you're, maybe I spaced out for a second, but you were saying that there, were you talking about the post-secondary workforce readiness? English and math guidelines that were supposed to be for 2021? Those are now going to go to 2022?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Katie and Melissa, thank you for that information. We had grading practices on our radar last year before COVID hit. And we're working with each level to come up with some more effective and efficient grading practices. So that work will continue. We do have an intent this year to get back to a more traditional model of grading at all levels. And we'll even be able to accomplish that in a hybrid model at high school. So we, we will continue to work on those practices overall, but move back to something more, more normalized. So with that, we'll move into the segment of the presentation on cleaning, sanitizing and disinfection. And with that, I'd like to introduce our Director of Facilities, Mr. Aaron Saquintes. Aaron, are you with us?
I am here. Thank you very much, Phil. Appreciate that. I'd like to start off by saying thank you for letting me speak about our cleaning practices and disinfection plans and measures. And I'll just give a little over-brief and we can go to the next slide. So with this being said, the way we're going, because, because of the level of disinfection that's going to need, and sanitization and cleaning that need, that's going to need to happen during a, when we open school, is we're going to need all the support we can from teachers and support staff and to help in the small parts of cleaning and sanitizing surfaces daily and then custodians to really do the deep disinfections of buildings at night. It's because we are already over 10 custodians short just to operate on a normal operating, across the district, on a normal operating mode, you add this level of disinfection and it just really changes the things that need to be done. So with that, part of it, what we're going to need to see, would like to see happen, and we have to change some scheduling around so that we get more time in the buildings after students are gone, students and staff are gone, so we can really do the disinfecting process. We have to do more. With the, we're talking with the Department of Health, we have to do more disinfection on a regular basis, bathrooms every two hours, touch points on a regular basis throughout the day. So some of this, what we're thinking about is, working on is, we would like to, you know, teachers can bring out trash and put it in a central location at the end of their day. If they have a single class that's in there all day, then at the end of their day, they would wipe down chairs and tabletops so that we can still support getting all the other stuff done. And then taking their, taking the trash out to a central location in every hallway and then we pick it up and take it away. If you have cohorts that are changing at a regular basis, we are going to have to clean or I'm going to say disinfect desktops between cohorts because even though a disinfection kills, disinfection kills germs on the surfaces, there, there is not an extended kill time after you've done it. If someone came and was to sneeze on it or touch it with some, with some dirty hands, it would, it would then again be contaminated. So, and that being said, the slide talks about cleaning. So there is processes that we still have to do. We still have to clean. And that's why the custodians, it's very essential that they don't get tasked with any other duties. they don't get tasked with any other duties, but their custodial tasks. Cleaning removes the germs in the food and the dirt and fluids that allow us to improve the disinfection and the sanitization levels. So that's why we're asking for some of this participation and help from everybody to just roll up their sleeves and pitch him during this time. It's going to be challenging. And even with full on disinfecting on a very regular basis, I don't want, I think, disinfection, I don't want anybody to get a false sense of security from it because you still can't transmit things. I've listened to a lot of webinars on it. And but we are, we have a very strong plan in place about it. Some of the measures that we are doing is we have, we are in the process right now of installing Plexiglas guards at all the front office contact points so that there's a barrier between people when they come up. We are putting floor markings down to highlight the social distancing and six foot levels and things like that signage at doors saying that we are we are you do need to require a mask. Sanitize hand sanitizer stations clearly marked, clearly marked saying that where you can find a hand sanitization station, hand washing signs everywhere just to emphasize our the need to keep keep hands clean. We have gone through and already started building the isolation rooms in accordance with the Department of Health in Eagle County with their advice and their direction, we've started to build and change rooms to make these happen, whether it means isolation curtains or and where they are the way that they have seating or bedding and the way the desks are set up and all the processes we've gone through that already. Let's see what else. We are using very effective industry disinfection cleaners that have a very low dwell time. So that means they do not need to sit on a surface very long. Some out there that are said that people are touting say they need five minutes or 10 minutes. But the one we use and at the dilution rate we're using, it's a two minute dwell time. So it's a very fast and effective cleaner against or disinfecting against this virus. We are frequently disinfecting touch points on a very regular basis. We have approved things for when it comes to keyboards and IT equipment that we're using that we're wanting. We are have according to the Department of Health, it's two minute or two minutes, it's two every two hours you need to go through and disinfect bathrooms. So we've got that on a schedule and we've been training the staff up for that. And then D really deep disinfecting is that is done at night. The one thing we also have done is normal floors, hard floors, where we just would use a neutral pH cleaner on them. We have actually changed our processes to in to now use a neutral pH neutral disinfectant on all hard floors because we are expecting people to branch out and try to do cafeterias and put kids all over the place. Now, if they're sitting on the floor and they're because they're in the cafeteria and there's not a lot of space and they want to sit on the floor, we can feel safe that they are we are disinfecting those on a regular basis when we clean all the hard floors. And as you can see, there's other things on the slide that talks about other frequent areas that we are we are doing. So next slide, please. We're going to get to HVAC a little bit. So at the district, we have a few different kinds of HVAC systems. We have we've got ones that use rooftops and units that provide huge wings of of central air. We've got classrooms and older schools that have unit ventilators. We have different kinds of systems. But we do one thing that's pretty standard across the district on a lot of our systems, especially the newer ones, is we have we have automation where we can control how much outside air we let in. Now, on an average, we are we are in ASHRAE standards very place to place. But we we keep around 20 to 28% of fresh air on an average in our district. But what we are going to do now in direction with the health department is we are going to modify those operations to then, when possible, bring in much more fresh air. So we are changing the air cycles out quicker. And we are going to be able to provide more fresh air instead of just less return air and more fresh air. We also use a MERV eight filter, which is not the highest, but it's not the lowest. It's in the middle, and it's a very good quality filter. And those are all being changed out as we speak during the summer before we start school. When we can have open windows, we will have windows open. It makes a little more challenging in the winter, as you can imagine, because it gets cold here. So that's a big one. Teaching materials, we, like I said before, we we have special ways to clean that. So we're always keeping those disinfecting and safe. We have just actually purchased over the last few years with the help of 3A. And we have actually replaced almost every vacuum in our district. We've been really good. And we actually just received a huge shipment of new vacuums. And of course, they're using HEPA filters and we change the filters very frequently. So the other thing is outdoor areas. I know there's high touch areas like railings and things like that we will have to be wiping down. However, cleaning of play structures or disinfecting play structures is something that we don't have plans to do because of the constant amount of it. And and so we are we will be doing all the railings and things like that. But what we will encourage is hand washing and and hand sanitizer and things like that before and after you go out to the play area, the kids go out to the place to playgrounds. And with that, do I have any questions? I see a bunch of chats coming in.
Hey, Aaron, I do have a quick question.
Sure.
And Phil or Kate, I don't know if you're able to address the comment section for this. But my question is that is there a way are we concerned at all with the chemicals used in the school to clean all these surfaces for the kids and the staff health? Are there any harm chemicals that we're going to be using to clean this up?
Well, okay, I put I will every chemical in order to in order to kill coronavirus or any kind of a human coronavirus, you have to have a chemical that's strong. You can't do it with with things that are not made to be a disinfectant. So unfortunately, there's a trade off. Safety comes with using a chemical that is strong. No, the chemical we're using is no no worse than anything else that household disinfectants that you use unless you're buying the other things that don't have such qualified kill rates. We also don't have the the ability to have things that use 10 minute dwell times and things like that. We have to use something that's fairly strong in order to accomplish the task at hand. And and there is a trade off. I agree. I mean, I would love to not use as many chemicals, but look at hospitals and everywhere else. You have to use a chemical that's strong to get to accomplish the objective.
Thank you.
Can I add to that real quick? So one of the things that we do have is those electrostatic sprayers. And last year, at the end of the year, we were using a chemical that pure tabs. And that did give some individuals a headache or made it difficult to breathe. So we're moving away from that and using the BNC because it doesn't have as many side effects for people because the smell is not as strong. So we're trying to do the best we can to make sure that we're not affecting people in that way. And then we also, once it's sprayed on, we'll be needing to kind of wipe the surface off so that once the dwell timer is done, we're able to kind of wipe it off. So there's no residue.
And to add to that, we we are still use some pure tabs. But what we're trying to do is not use them in areas that are close that are much closer quarters. They are great. They are actually a very industry standard for high touch points and things like that, like door handles and things like that. So we'd still like to use those because they are the most effective disinfectant we have in our in our arsenal of of things to combat combat this. But we would like to change the area where we use them. And the electrostatic, the reason why, if you just to give a little more information why, and we were lucky, we got ahead of this, we started buying those as a district for every school before we even knew what coronavirus was. We just we were trying to get come up with a really good disinfection plan when we just for the just for the regular flu season even. And because we knew we've had years where we've had so many students with absentees, you know, being sick. So and and we luckily had one at every school before this even went off. And then we got a few, we got a bunch more now. And the reason we buy those is because if you know how electrostatic works, all you have to do is mist it at the area. And the electrostatic part makes it wrap around every little crevice, nook and cranny so that it gets wet. You don't have to be so detailed. It actually will wrap itself around every every bit of the surface. And that's why they're so effective. That's why they're used worldwide now.
Aaron, thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm just wondering how the custodial staff is feeling about this. You gotta work nighttime. Like, have you talked to all of them? How many of them are okay with it? How many have kids and it's not doable?
I I we are working through that right now. I mean, I understand that the we understand that there is a there is there is some sacrifices that we that have to be made for this. We in order to be effective to keep everybody as a district safe, we have to change the all the districts are changing their I've been on webinars with districts across the United States and they're all having to alter their schedules a little bit because of this because we need more time when there's nobody there to get the get the deep disinfection done to keep everybody safe for when they return the next day. And that is, if you were hired as a nighttime custodian, you were under the impression that you were working a PM shift.
No, yeah, I totally get that. But I'm just wondering, like, what if this staff members say, no, I cannot work nights. I mean, we're still keeping them, right? And we'll find another solution. Like, it sounds great. I love the plan. But I'm thinking from their perspective. And if I'm working certain amount of hours and all of a sudden they're telling me you gotta work nighttime to make this work. I don't know. Do we have a backup plan for the staff members that know I cannot do the night shift?
Sandy, you want to take that?
Sure. So the current staff that works into the evening, what we would be doing is working with them individually to see about getting their hours adjusted to where they come in like two hours later and work two hours later into the evening in order to get less time with students. But that's just a process, a direction that we're hoping to get to. But we haven't got that far yet.
And then sort of similarly, at the beginning, Aaron, did I hear correctly, you say something about how we're 10 custodians short already? Do we have vacancies we're trying to fill? Or what can you clarify that?
No, I can clarify that. I apologize. No, if we were going by industry standards of how you should staff school facilities with based on square footage and and amount of staff and students and classroom numbers, we are, as a district, running 10 10, at least 10 under what we should be for proper amount of staffing. We don't have any vacancies open. We're we are we are we have all the FTE filled that we are allotted. But as a district, over the years, we've dwindled down the FTE. And now it now we are 10 short, at least 10 short.
Right. And this is an issue that Aaron has inherited from the budget cuts that took place in whatever year that was 11, right? The FTE cuts is another place where we have not returned to our original FTE levels. So we appreciate the facilities team, you know, working so hard and for years with less people than they really need. But that was how we kept some of these cuts out of the classroom. Just since I'm talking, I have the mic here. Just to remind people, I'm sorry, I didn't say before, the chat is actually not part of the meeting. Please email to Communications if you have questions or concerns for us. We appreciate, you know, the input enthusiasm, but we have some pretty strict guidelines on how we can do it. So even though it's a function of Google Meet, it's not a function of this meeting. And then if you are walking around with your computer while you're watching us, you can turn your camera off, and then it won't be so distracting. And I do appreciate all the board members and the staff members that leave their cameras on because we know you're there and you're engaged. And we I should appreciate that. So all right, keep going, Aaron, I think.
That that was the last of mine. I was just open to any questions that might have come up from from the board.
Aaron, I think that's it. I appreciate your your time tonight and the thoughtless you put into the into the plan.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time to administer that. If anything else comes up, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm available anytime.
Will do. So that brings us to Work, Site, Health, and Safety. And this section will be covered by Director of Human Resources, Adele Wilson. Adele, are you online tonight?
I am online. Good evening. How is everybody? It's a lengthy, lengthy presentation. So thank you for sticking with us. I have the next four slides, and I'm actually going to kind of skip over two and three because it talks about really things I think that we've addressed in in great detail already already as far as wearing face coverings, the cleanliness, and those type of things. So I'm going to focus more on the fact that in order to keep school open, we need to make sure that we keep our staff very healthy so that we can do that. We have, as you know, we have a limited number of staff members, and we have a limited number of our guest teachers, our substitutes, to replace those teachers in the classroom who might be out due to absence. So we want to be sure that we keep them safe. A few weeks ago, we conducted the survey, and we had about 29 staff members who said that they might fall into one of those vulnerable categories that would need to be out of the building and maybe teaching remotely or finding another work assignment. We did ask of those folks to actually contact me directly so that we could have more of a private conversation. And I've so far heard from about a third of them. And out of those folks, only about four are actually really, really concerned with not being in the building. The rest of them just want to be sure that we're aware. And if we have those safety precautions in place that we've previously talked about, they feel comfortable and that they would be able to continue working in the building. So we'll maybe see how things go after this presentation gets out there to more individuals if I hear from more employees. But we will be sure to be taking care of those. And one thing I wanted to note was part of negotiations, we determined that we would we agreed to covering any sort of health insurance premium increase because we want to be sure that our folks have the coverage and that they are taken care of and that they see a doctor and get taken care of if necessary. Joanne, we can skip those two and then go to the the fourth one. So if we have any staff members who need to be out because of COVID-19, whether they fall into one of those vulnerable categories, or perhaps we have a student in their classroom that gets sick, or they have a family member, or they come into contact with the Family's First Coronavirus Act, we are mandated to provide 10 days of paid leave to our employees. So to begin with, that would be able to kind of cover their absence from work. And then beyond that, if they needed more time, they have their own personal paid leave, they have a crew paid leave, we could look at FMLA. And then should there not be the opportunity for them to work, there is unemployment. However, we are very committed to making sure that we are able to take care of our folks and making sure that we are able to take care of our folks who may have to work remotely, or we may have to look at different opportunities for them. We did meet with the negotiations team yesterday, and we will be meeting with them again on Monday. And we started the conversation about a potential separate sick leave bank strictly for COVID absences. So we're talking a little more in detail about what that might look like. Does anybody have any questions? Nope. If you think of anything later, you all know where to reach us.
So finite number of guest teachers, are there any plans to ramp that up, seeing as we will expect to have more teachers out sick?
So we actually have 140 guest teachers on our list. And we always have interest. What I wonder is if we'll have interest this year as our unemployment rate in the county as our unemployment rate in the county um, has increased from a like a 1.3%. So now I believe we're at about 22%. So we will do some recruitment. Our concern really is with that is that the preparation of them to actually lead, you know, a hybrid model or um, remote learning. Many of our guest teachers are not teachers by trade and so don't necessarily have that expertise. And so we would need to look at, you know, deepening our training of those individuals to make sure that they are prepared to go into that that model if if necessary.
Um, and have we thought of or have we done any polling of those 140 to see if they're in the area, if they're even interested in remaining on the list for this year?
Yep. So those are the people that are in the area and are remaining on the list. We've we've called it down already.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
That's good. Yeah, thank you very much, Adele, for all the the work and uh, for all the staff. It just, we're doing our very best at all levels to make sure that we're going to meet your needs as well as the students. Uh, we know there's a lot of concerns from the staff and the teachers and it's going to be challenging. But I see that we've got a pretty good plan started and some backup plans to uh, to help if they're getting sick. And we're uh, appreciate the support and all the effort there in HR. We're just going to do our best for everyone as we can.
Mm hmm. You're welcome.
Adele, thank you for your section there. I'd like to uh, move the presentation along to Anne Heckman. Anne is our Director of Educator Quality. And uh, through through this pandemic, we still have an obligation to make sure that we've got top quality teachers in front of kids. We know uh, from John Hattie's research that the quality educator is the number one factor in ensuring that a student uh, receives a high quality education. So um, we can't lose sight of our our teacher leadership system that we have in our district, uh, the responsibilities and roles of those individuals and to make sure that all of our teachers receive uh, appropriate professional levels of of coaching so that they can improve their practice and be the best they can be. So with that, I'll turn it over to uh, to Anne Heckman. Anne, are you online?
I am. Um, good evening, Board. Thank you for your time this evening. Um, I thought it was interesting that I came after the the health and safety slide. And I thought, well, no, it's really important that we maintain the intellectual and professional well-being and stamina and integrity of our staff. And teacher leadership is our primary resource. Um, and how we do that, because there's not enough of us who serve at the district office to meet with every single teacher and coach them individually. So every school has an instructional leadership team made up of the principal, assistant principal, and teachers' leaders whose primary responsibilities are to coach other teachers and to lead professional learning in their schools. Um, I'm excited by the opportunity to come before you in a couple of weeks to um, explain some of the training that we have anticipated. Because I've heard a bunch of questions that I can say, we've got a training for that. We know how we're going to address that. So um, I I just look forward to that time with you. So just real quickly, the slides are pretty self-explanatory. Teacher leadership is something we've done in our district since the early 2000s. It is a practice that we believe really can impact um, students and student achievement that in order for students to improve, they do, as Phil said, they need a high-quality teacher. And we've got to make sure our teachers are um, up on the most current, the best practices to meet kids' needs. So this year, more than ever, as um, I don't know that we'll return to what we once had. We are still maintaining a commitment to equity and to MTSS. So our what and our why is staying the same, but our how is going to have to change. And we've done a lot of learning since March 13th, but we want to continue to build our teachers' capacity to be flexible regardless of how and where they instruct from and who they're instructing to. So um, knowing that we have our teacher leaders, their two primary responsibilities are coaching and professional learning communities, and that's what PLC stands for. I wanted to thank the Board and Negotiations Committee for um, approving that we do now have the ability to release teacher leaders from their full teaching responsibility to dedicate time to this additional responsibility they've taken on to meet with um, teachers. We believe that all teachers um, deserve and will receive regular coaching. But we do give schools the autonomy to determine who in their school needs what and how best to meet that need and to align which teacher leader should be coaching which teachers. Um, and we're also going to really start encouraging, just based on limited time and resources, that coaching can take place in small groups as well, such as a professional learning community. So really working with our teachers at an event we call Teacher Leader Institute that will happen in August. Of different ways to coach so that they can really customize the approach at their school and individualize for their teachers um, what they need. Um, I do want to point out that we don't just do coaching the way Anne Heckman thinks it needs to be done. We do utilize um, all 20 years plus of research from Jim Knight and his group out of the University of Kansas. And he utilizes something called the Partnership Principles, which is the idea that two people come together in a conversation and you're partners in the learning. It's not that one has more knowledge and is able to tell the other what to do. It's it really gives us guidelines on how to guide teachers talking about teaching. And then the Impact Cycle is his um, model for what needs to be included when you coach people so that we're really building the capacity of our coaches to be the most effective they can be in the limited amount of time that they have. So then, next slide, please. Um, so coaching is one piece and then professional learning communities is another. Professional learning communities is something that we've done for almost 20 years. Currently, we have an agreement that all schools and all teachers will engage in at least 75 minutes of professional of a PLC per week. Some schools, some of our smaller schools do whole school PLC. Um, and some do it by grade level or content area. Some of our schools do more than the 75 minutes a week because they really value that time of teachers being able to share with one another their practice um, and what's making a difference for for student outcomes. We are really getting um, back to and going to work with our ILTs, Instructional Leadership Teams, that all their PLCs need to be focused around their goals and their Unified Improvement Plan. That is the plan that is required by the state. And every school has to submit a plan with certain goals that they have for students. And that PLCs, um, the learning that happens in that, the data that they they keep track of will impact and make changes to their instruction in the classroom. Um, and they'll be able to go through a cycle to see, okay, our data is telling us this thing. We're going to do this for students. They go and do it and then they come back and review. Did it make a difference? If it did, awesome, keep doing it. And now let's do the next thing. If it didn't, they're able to really analyze why, make the tweaks and try something else or do it again. So with that, that's really the teacher leader roles. I did keep this sort of at the 500-foot level as um, we're really trying to plan for this next year. We typically have a theme last last couple of years. It's really been around coaching. We have heard from our principals and our teachers and through the survey what they want most of all, especially those first couple of months of schools. They want to build the relationship with kids. They want to build the relationship with parents. They want to build the capacity of both kids and parents to be able to learn in whatever situation that we're in. So we are really looking in, when I say we, Learning Services as a whole, how can we best support what they are asking from us at to begin this the school year? So we're really trying to plan on being responsive and doing the best we can to set teachers, kids and parents up for success.
Anne, thanks for that summary. Any any questions for Anne Heckman?
No, it's great to know. We're continuing the important work. We don't want to let go of uh, our instructional focus while we're managing to uh, try to figure out ways to survive the uh, the pandemic. And so we appreciate your focus, Anne.
So Anne, quick question. So have you are you working with technology to sort, given that that's going to be a new way of teaching for particularly high school teachers? To help with that aspect of learning?
I am so glad you asked because I am still riding on the high of a workshop that we did yesterday that um, Mary Ann Stavney, who works with me in Educator Quality, Renee Westenfelder of Curriculum, Amber Gonzalez, who's in multi um, bilingual education, and then the EdTech team and I all came together to really try to figure out what, how do we need to build our teachers' capacities? And so one of our focuses is on how to do flipped classroom. And not just because we've experienced remote learning, but because flipped classroom approaches is a highly effective approach for kiddos. And it allows teachers, when they're in class with the students, to do um, more intensive instruction, small group differentiation. So we are conducting a series of workshops with that. The group yesterday who participated was our pilot and they all said, we want more of this. And the thing they specifically asked for was this method of planning and the thinking and process we taught them. They get understand that piece now and now they want to better understand our technology tools, how the technology can fit in and be utilized depending on if students are learning in the classroom synchronously with the teacher or doing some remote learning or just even homework, how to make homework more effective so that the in-class time can can be um, used more effectively and efficiently. So that's one piece. Another piece is um, we're starting the conversation of what is the parent piece around technology that needs to happen? And what what does that need to be? And somebody referenced that earlier that from a technology perspective, an instructional perspective, we'll put together a framework of what we believe families need. But then we're going to give those to schools to allow schools to meet with their parent populations and make sure parents have the information that's most relevant to them. There is going to be a lot more consistency on how kids and what it looks like when when a parent is sitting with their child and engaging with them online. And through that consistency, system-wide, which teachers have gone thumbs up, this is great. It's going to make everything simpler for kids to engage and for parents to engage. So um, yes, my, that was the long answer to your short answer of, yes, I'm working very closely. Um, and I'm frankly quite, quite thrilled and optimistic at how all of our departments are coming together to solve problems that are most closely related to students and to try and make teachers' lives easier.
Thanks.
All right, who's next?
Sorry, I just dropped out.
Next slide, sorry, so we can see. Okay.
Back, lost you, but I'm back. Uh, next part of the presentation is uh, Director of Communications, Dan Dougherty. He's he's developed an interesting graphic to, I think, help us understand the different layers of protection that the district is implementing to try to keep schools as safe as possible, keep our our schools open as long as they can. And then he'll transition into the communication plan uh, around uh, the plan that you've seen this evening. So Dan, are you online? Can you talk to us about the layers of protection graphic?
Uh, yes, I am, Phil. Thank you. Uh, good evening, Board. I think by now um, everybody is probably um, pretty clear that that we have a lot to communicate about and uh, there's a lot of complexity to it and a lot of detail to it. One of the things that we feel is very important is for us to be able to convey not only the individual uh, components of our our kind of requirements and 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 guidelines that we're going to be following, but also demonstrate how they work together to create uh, layers of protections. Joanne, if you could go ahead and advance the slide and probably to this slide. Now, this is a complex graphic and and we're we're still working on it. It's a draft. Uh, but what it does is it shows how each one of the five commitments of containment kind of work together to create a clean zone at the schools. The number one thing for everybody, uh, parents and students and staff is to stay home if you're symptomatic. Uh, get tested if you're symptomatic, uh, share information and and allow the public health department to do the contact tracing. If we ask parents to do an observational health screening of their students or their children before they leave for school, this does not have to be an onerous or laborious process. Through a conversation with your with your child in the morning, you can determine whether or not they're coughing or sneezing or if their their cheeks are flushed. Uh, maybe they feel hot to the touch or are lethargic. If they're going to complain, if they're complaining about sore throats or upset stomachs. You know, these things can just happen really very very naturally. And uh, they they arrive at um, uh, there there are no problems. My my child is safe to go to school. Uh, so if we continue with our health screening at school, the adults in the in the facilities will essentially be doing the same thing. It's an observational screening. It's is again, it's not laborious. It's just looking for those symptoms and and, excuse me, having that mental awareness that we need to kind of be vigilant about looking for those uh, each and every day. When we do that, we we limit the presence of virus in the schools to our best ability. Of course, it's not foolproof. We know that folks will develop symptoms in school. We also know that uh, some people, some people may be asymptomatic. Uh, but that's where the wearing a face covering comes into play. Uh, face covering, there are new uh, new data out from the World Health Organization and um, some surveys or some uh, research done by Florida Atlantic University that was just released. That really just shows how effective uh, even uh, run-of-the-mill face coverings are. Uh, so they're very good and effective at at reducing the amount of um, distance. Microscopic droplets uh, can travel. Um, and especially if if someone happens to be infected, that's that's of critical importance. Uh, so having those face coverings is uh, an essential safety layer inside the school. Practicing the social distancing and the physical distancing to the to the best of our ability. Again, the idea behind the uh, the mask is contain the droplet spread. The idea behind the keeping safe distance is I keep people far enough apart to one another so that they don't come into contact with the droplet spread that does happen. And when you when you combine that with frequent hand washing, the use of hand sanitization and working in cohort groups, then we're we're really creating a fairly safe uh, and healthy environment within the school. Uh, there are a couple of things that are critical. If someone does develop symptoms in school, uh, one is, of course, all of our students are under constant adult supervision. Uh, so uh, we will notice uh, if a kid is, if a if a child is getting sick and not feeling well. And the idea is to um, get them to the health department or health office as quickly as possible. Uh, they'll be put into an isolation room um, if they if they show COVID symptoms. Parents will be called. We will need unprecedented cooperation with parents uh, to come and pick their children up. And if they do develop symptoms, uh, make sure they get tested uh, so that we can follow the next uh, protocols, which is uh, determining uh, with the partnership with public health, uh, what uh, steps might be taken. Again, our our goal is to uh, have cohorts small enough to where uh, if one positive case occurs, then we can uh, take action at the smallest grouping possible in terms of transitioning to remote learning. So we are working on different ways to um, communicate this graphic. It it does take a little bit of time. It's complex to to get the idea. Uh, but it's much like the zones of security at an airport. Uh, you pass through uh, security uh, and you go into a protected area. Everybody that's in that area has been uh, through the security process. But what you might not know is that all of the employees that have access to that area, they've also undergone thorough background checks. They have badges that allow them uh, specific and limited access to uh, things that are in uh, hallways. Uh, you know, connectors to the baggage area. So uh, efforts are made to create these uh, zones of security. So efforts are made to create these zones of security to keep everybody safe. And, and this really is, in our estimation, the way all of these measures work together to keep everybody safe. Joanne, could you go to the next slide, please? It is a lot of complex. We'll go into our communication plan overview. There's a lot of complex information. We are planning on creating printed guides because of that complexity. Printed materials, in this particular case, serve as, as an easy and handy reference point. Parents can flip back and forth into the, to the information that we share if they need to be refreshed on a particular guideline that we have in place. We also recognize that some of our community may not have access to electronic communications. And we want this information to be available in multiple modalities. Next slide, please. This is just a quick overview. Generally, our newsletters reach 8,200 people. About 6,500 roughly are prefer to receive an English version. And about 2,500 prefer a Spanish version. The engagement levels are very similar in regardless of which language we send them out into. Again, we think of our newsletters as our monthly updates to audiences and our social media as our daily conversation. So we will be, of course, using social media to kind of deliver this information in bits and pieces, but also with links to the full materials that folks can look at. And we hope to add some video to, you know, help address some issues that people may have or concerns that may come up. One of our most effective methods of, of communication is, is really just direct exchange of information with internal staff through meetings. We're doing those virtually. We will probably be doing some of those in person as conditions improve and as more of our staff comes back to, to work. Next slide. If, if any, if anybody online has an elementary student, they may have seen these pop-up display banners that we have at elementary schools. They're currently carrying a message about our footsteps to brilliance resource. We're going to repurpose those pop-up devices to serve as passive reminders of some of the key steps that folks need to do. Just again, to have frequent top-of-mind reminders for folks. Floor stickers have been ordered. Aaron and his team are going to be installing those to try to help mark physical distance reminders. You know, we recognize that we're going to have challenges at pickup and drop off. You know, kids waiting in lines for the bus. We want to really make sure that, that we have those spaces marked off. We intend on creating posters to remind staff and parents. And then we're also putting together some refrigerator magnets that we'll be sending out to parents that will just kind of have the symptom checklist on it. Next, next slide. And Phil, I think this, I think this comes back to you at this point. So before we go there, can I answer any questions about our, our communication plan and/or kind of the graphic concept around communicating about how the five efforts of containment work together as well as individually?
Dan, just maybe a suggestion, when you guys send the newsletter, you know, with what the, what the final plan is, if there can be an option for parents, I'm sure there's going to be more questions that pop up once we know what's happening. If maybe there can be an option where they can, you know, like direct any questions they have to you. And maybe after a week, we can do like a Q and A with all those questions, answers for people to see. Because I'm sure there's going to be more questions once we know what's, what we're doing.
Yes, I, I think that's a fabulous idea and thank you for that. We will definitely, in our electronic communications, include things like comment forms and feedback forms to make it really easy for our parent community and even our staff community as well in our staff newsletters to submit questions and concerns. And the nice thing about that is that because we can get together quite frequently, we'll be able to get our DLT together and answer those questions and then put that FAQ together. So thank you for that. That's great. Any, any other questions, suggestions? You know, we're, initially, we had hoped to, you know, spend some time the rest of this week kind of finalizing some of our communication efforts based on the feedback and, and questions that come up from this presentation. But we are learning on a day-by-day basis that we, we still need a few items to come in from public health to finalize. But we do hope to, to be able to get an electronic version of this out rather quickly. And our intent is to have that printed piece available for parents before the start of school. And if there's no other questions, I'll turn it back over to Phil. Thank you so much, everyone, for listening.
Dan, thank you. I want to acknowledge the work of the Communications Department in the last several months. You guys have really worked overtime managing the different public forums, all the significant communication expectations around school closures and trying to reopen. And it, it's been a bit, a heavy lift and your, your department has been really open-minded and, and creative and putting in a lot of effort. So thank you. And we're not done yet.
Yeah, thanks, Phil. You know, when we started, you know, I had hair. So it's been a little stressful. No, kidding, I've been bald for a long time. Thanks, everybody.
Got it. Well, the last, last piece I wanted to, to share here on this final slide is really a message from public health. And we, we heard this back in March, that, that the belief is, and, and the scientific data would, would suggest that, that schools are generally a, a more controlled environment than other public places. So we are, are taking extra steps and providing extra precautions to try to keep them even safer than normal. But in, in terms of social distancing expectations, we'll, we'll do the best that we can. But we also have to recognize that we have more vigilant sanitation standards than most public places. We're able to, to control student behavior and movement and locations. We're able to control the infrastructure inside the building and send people home if they're not feeling well. So we, we have a lot of controls that keep school environments safe. And, and all of the decisions that we've made today are intended to elevate that and provide us even greater levels of control and safety. And, and, you know, to our last slide, Joanne, I think to, to conclude is really just to, to recognize that this is a draft. We will constantly be modifying these plans and ask everyone in the organization and, and our community to please be patient. I don't know that this plan will ever be finalized. We will be learning new information weekly. And with that new information, we have a responsibility to modify the plan. So it's in pencil. It'll probably remain in pencil. And, and as soon as we can get some of those details that Dan referenced from public health, we'll, we'll get a community-wide distribution out in, in written format and in electronic format. So thank you to everybody. I think the, the, the last thing for us to do here before we move on is, is just to get more board feedback on those, those two questions that I posed before the dinner break. And the questions were about whether or not elementary and middle schools should consider a hybrid model instead of the five-day-a-week model. And the second question was if, if we could convert a few of the instructional days scheduled at the beginning of the year, planning days, and put back the start date a few days to allow teachers more time to, to plan and, and prepare to overhaul all lessons. Because the training that they're going to get to do that is going to happen in August, right, when they come back under contract. And they're just not going to have a lot of time to, to retool all of their, all of their materials for the start date. So with that, I will, I will mute unless there's questions and then give each board member an opportunity to comment.
I have some, a question that I had turned in or whatever when we were supposed to read, turn them in after reading the thing. I don't really understand. So if a kid comes down with symptoms and gets sent home, are they then required to go get a COVID test? And if they do go get a COVID test, does it take multiple days to get the result? And what happens to the other kids in that class in the time, be, you know, during that timeframe when we don't know if they had it or they didn't have it? So for all we know, we've just exposed a whole bunch of kids who then go home to their families. How does that work?
Sure. There's a lot of variations on that, that question, Shelley. And, and those are the questions that public health officials intend to tackle next week. Basically, it's, it's going to be a decision tree and it'll have a lot of complex scenarios. And, and we can't force anybody to get testing. We can encourage people to get testing. The trick with that is the turnaround time. When things are slow, you can get a test back in 24 hours. When things have ramped up, it can take over a week. So requiring a positive test to make a decision is, is not, is not an efficient methodology. So decisions would have to be made on students who are symptomatic. And those are the questions that public health officials are examining next week.
It seems like there's also the issue of siblings and, you know, what happens there? I mean, it just seems sort of never-ending in terms of, you know, what are the, you know, branches of the decision tree? But that helps me to understand that there would be somebody helping us make those decisions and what's the right thing to do in each scenario and so forth. So thank you.
Ideas around that already, and, and those were in the presentation. But I don't know how valid those are considering what, what public health is reviewing next week. So we didn't really share too much of those details in the meeting tonight, waiting and anticipating that we'll get more strict guidance from public health.
The other thing is it seems like that becomes a communication issue. Because at what point do you tell parents that somebody in a classroom either was exposed or had symptoms or tested positive? And, you know, allow them to make decisions about their own family and their own risk factor, risks? And.
Right. Part of the request for a few additional days at the beginning of the year is to facilitate more lengthy and in-depth conversations with families, one-on-one. So in that time, teachers and administrators would be able to talk to, to families about what to expect when school shifts to remote learning, as well as here are the factors that might lead us there. And here's how we will communicate to you that you need to come and pick up your child or that school will be closed for a few days. So that, that's, I think, a key reason why they want to have that extra time to have those conversations with families, one-on-one.
I'll chime in. Based on all of the information we've been able to get a hold of, both from the scientific and data side, as well as input from our community, per the two questions, I would certainly be in favor of allocating more time at the start of the school year for teachers to get some additional training and learning, especially around some of the virtual tools they would be using, will be using at some point. And then I would be in favor of keeping with the draft plan of having elementary and middle schools in person versus a hybrid and just doing a hybrid at the high school level. And then I did just have one other outstanding question on devices. So this might be a Tenille question, but I was just curious where we are at with additional Chromebooks for one-on-ones and for hotspots.
So over the summer, as I mentioned earlier, we have, we have all the devices that we currently have ready to go. We have put in an order to replace the ones that were lost or not returned as well. And as far as hotspots go, on the parent information sheet that goes back, that comes home at the beginning of the year to new and returning students, there is a question on there about whether or not parents have internet at their home. We wanted to make sure we had a really good idea of who does and doesn't have internet. I know we sent that question home in a survey back in March, but we want to make sure we capture it again from every parent. So we're sending it in, in that parent update. And so we have, we were working with Verizon on hotspots during the, the closure that we were in. We also have reached out to T-Mobile to do a hotspot program with them as well so that we have multiple carriers to work with. We've also, T-Mobile has worked with us to send out an engineer. In some of our spots where we're really struggling to get a signal, they're going, because when you look at a coverage map for some of our carriers, it looks like we have full coverage. But we know when we drive around the valley that there are places where you don't have signal. So we, I've requested T-Mobile to send out an engineer and they're going to check on some of the trickier spots for us. And then we're going to talk together on some of the ways that we can devise a plan for how we can cover that. Does that answer all your questions?
That helps out from the hotspot side. Chromebooks, we were not at the one-to-one device point last year. And so I get the refurbishing and replacing the ones that we did have. But do we have, are they completely backordered for two years at this point? Or do we have additional devices? Because I thought I'd heard something about we were going to be at one-on-one across the board this year.
With the devices that we are ordering, which will be in in the next week or so, we will be at one-to-one.
For all grade levels?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent, thanks, Tenille. Other board members care to share your thoughts on, there's two questions about hybrid at all levels or extra planning days?
Sorry, it's awkward here. I agree that I think the additional planning days at the beginning of the year seem incredibly valuable, possibly even essential to really kicking off the year in a positive way and making sure that families and students all understand school g and the technology that will be needed if schools are forced to close. In terms of a hybrid model, the elementary and middle school level, I think that the five-day-a-week model is what I'd like to see. It does seem to me that teacher input and buy-in is a decent piece of that, though. So I guess, you know, I guess those are discussions that, you know, you're engaging in with the staff. But it seems that the staff has to be comfortable with that. And we certainly have to have critical mass of staff willing to work full-time in the classrooms to make that happen. So I think the goal would be certainly at the elementary level and middle school level to have school five days a week. But again, it seems like you have to have the staff buy-in for that to happen and to be effective. So those are sort of my two cents.
Phil, I have a question. So in reference to the hybrid version for elementary and middle school, well, if it does, will it look similar to what the high school we're looking at?
Yeah, the hybrid model would, would, would consist of the flipped instruction model at all levels. So students would attend school two days a week. And then two days a week, they would be expected to engage in, in projects, online classwork, individual classwork, likely with some online support, but no dedicated synchronous instruction time from, from teachers on those days. So that would require supervision from somebody, especially at elementary, for students to, to do that work.
Okay, so basically, the, the work that they are being assigned already, they would have the option to meet a few days with the teacher during the week. Is that correct?
Yeah, two days a week, they would be in school. And then the day after they were in school, they would have a, basically a to-do list, a task list of, of projects or items, assignments to complete on their own that could be submitted virtually for the teacher to review and then, and then jump back into new content the next day or provide feedback on the work that the students have completed, assuming they complete the work when, when they're not in school.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I would say that I'd be looking for more towards the hybrid version than to have them five days at school. And there are, my thoughts behind that is that we are all trying to adjust to going back to school and whatnot. And I feel that if we are trying to have both the parents and kids and also the teachers and staff members safe, so to speak, and getting used to the, the new way of coming back to school, I would say that I'd rather have them come back just a few days rather than the full week from the beginning. In reference to the extra days for teachers, I would say it is fair to say that they should learn and have the time to learn the, 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 anything that needs to be learned before start, than trying to rush them while the school starts. So in reference to that, I'm all about it. Though I do have another question to that, does it mean that we would be sacrificing other? Uh, though I do have another questions to that, does it mean that we would be sacrificing other? Approved days already for teachers or is that something else?
It, it would take days out of contact with students. So it doesn't add contract days for teachers. Uh, it just transitions them from student attendance days to, to, uh, teacher work and training planning days. And in any event, we don't get a blanket waiver from, from CDE on, on seat time expectations, it would require us to. Add back into the end of May or June, uh, this equal number of days that we took out for the planning. Uh, because, uh, we are pretty tight on our instructional minutes as it is.
Okay, so in that case, I would suggest a little bit more. Not options, but rather what would be the outcome if we allow them to learn now the prior school? What is it that we will be sacrificing at the end of the school year? Uh, so that we all understand, or at least I understand the whole picture of, yes, we're giving this time, but. We also would be reducing the contact time with students.
Good, thank you. Ted, I have your comments from before the break, so they're noted.
Can I interrupt with one more question? Um, it seems at the high school level with the hybrid model, um, and if we were to take it to potentially elementary or middle school. Um, that it really becomes like more of a four-day school week. Is that sort of true? And if that's the case, as we talk about things like contact hours. Here and there, I'm not sure that I'm entirely understanding. Like we're worried about two days of contact hours at the beginning of the year if it's not potentially waived. But if we go to a hybrid model, we're going to sort of a four-day school week, which seems like that decreases contact hours quite a bit. So I guess I'm trying to understand the requirements there and how exactly that works and.
It does. The, the way CDE explains these rules is that i- if you're going to adopt a hybrid model. Then when kids are not in school, you have to demonstrate what they are doing. So the flipped classroom will, will demonstrate that. It will show, here are the tasks that, that, that students are assigned when they're out of school. Uh, here, here's the structure, here's the, the, the systems that they'll use to, to complete the work. And then we can even demonstrate the student products, uh, as evidence to CDE, uh, that they are engaged in that work. There's also gonna be an element of that that we haven't really talked about with our, with our principals. Uh, but it just came out in guidance from CDE, uh, in messaging today. Uh, and, and it's that, that when they are engaged in that remote off-day work. Um, that they would need to have access to live support. So we, we have been talking, uh, frequently about, about staff members who, who are unable to come back into school. Uh, because of, of pre-existing conditions or, uh, they need to care for somebody in their home that's high-risk. Um, but they could continue to stay engaged as, as teachers in our system and be employed as those support people. So when students are, are on an off day and they're at home and they're working on tasks or projects, uh, online work. From their teacher, uh, they would have somebody that they could contact at, uh, with the school, um, virtually, online. And receive support for whatever the project is that they're working on. Uh, so it gives us an option for those employees. It also gives support for the students and it allows us to, to count that time. As part of their instructional minutes.
I just had a question. It's sort of related to that. I mean, why do half not go on Fridays? And then the next week, the other half go on Friday or? I mean, it just seems like. Already. They're not gonna be there much and, oh, I mean, what was the thinking with leaving Friday with nobody there?
Uh, I don't understand the question.
Aren't they going Monday, Wednesday, or like they're gonna go every other day?
Maybe scheduled, they'll, they'll attend either Monday, Thursday or Tuesday, Friday. And Wednesday would be a day, uh, for teacher meetings, for IEP meetings, uh, for PLCs. For students who need high levels of support, uh, they could come in.
So given that Wednesday. Is set up that way. I mean, is that a time we can use for some of this training rather than take the risk of? Starting late and then potentially having to put it on the other end, which I don't know how we would fund. You know, if CD didn't come through with changing, I mean, I, I assume there will be flexibility with seat time, but. I also think. It's not ideal when we. You know, have one calendar and then have to go to another.
I, I think it's highly unlikely that we would have to add days in May or June. Uh, I, I think that, that from CDE, uh, there's an expectation that we show. Good faith to meet our, our instructional minutes and, and hybrid models are quite frequent around the state. So as, as long as we demonstrate that live support on the off days, um, I, I have little concern that, that that would be a problem. Um, but I, I would want the, the Teachers Association to just acknowledge that. In the event that, that that does happen, and I think it's rare, uh, that, that they're willing to, to add those days to.
So is it your, um, expectation that on a Wednesday? All staff would be in their building?
Yes.
So I would argue that. That's time that we can use to do some of this extra training.
We, we could. Uh, some of that time will be taken up with, with DLC meetings and.
But I mean, I think that. I mean, we used to have one hour, now we're gonna have a full day. Um, and I understand that there's student contact and things during that day as well. But it just seems like a lot more time, um. For some of that work and I, I get it that it, that's only at the high school level. Um. But I don't know, I just, I mean, at the elementary level, we've already added two days for testing. So I hate to take two more days away and then. Yeah, I mean, a, a day is a half a million dollars. So, I mean. We have to think carefully that, I mean, do we value those days or, and student contacts on those, you know, with teachers on those days? I mean, if they're costing us half a million dollars, I, I just think. We can't take that lightly.
Can I just add that at the high school level too, on the Wednesdays, those were days when. Classes, culinary arts, the automotive, the things that have to be in person and hands-on, uh, the DE chemistry. Uh, those classes would be taking place, some of those one-off classes that we talked about where. Um, if a student is in A-Day. Kido, we don't want to have a class that they need to be in on a B-Day. So Wednesdays would be, um, pretty essential to their schedule and to making sure that we can fit everything in. At the high school level. It's a little bit different at, at elementary and middle. Um, if we went the hybrid model, but, um, at the high school, those Wednesdays are important for that piece too.
And, and Shelley, can I add when we are looking, when we look at the hybrid schedule, um, for elementary and middle school as well? We did look to hold out time on that Wednesday to do all those essential trainings. So we were asking, um, admin and schools and other parts of the district not to schedule any meetings between two and four on those Wednesdays. So that we would be able to utilize that for the district trainings that would need to happen to help people with that model. Um, but now going back or trying to go back five days a week. Um, we need to relook at how we can get some of that training in now.
Yeah, I mean, I get it, but at the younger levels, I mean, you're really training. For the point at which they go home. So if we. Well, I guess if you have kids that. Aren't in the classroom that you're trained to, I don't know, it's messy.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have kids coming in and out, so all the teachers are gonna need that training, right? They're gonna have to be able to provide education for the students when they're out for fourteen days on quarantine. Um, you know, and so it is extra work on the teacher's side for sure. Even though we're saying they're not planning for two things, I mean, but they definitely have more to take into consideration in their planning time than they normally would. Um, you know, and the preparation to make sure that their lessons are easily accessible in a remote model as well. Um.
Yeah.
I think it's just, it's just.
I understand. And I mean, I, I, I can go either way if, you know, if they, if. I guess, given that we added those two days and. I don't, um. I could go either way, but, um, in terms of. Whether or not they should go to, you know, we should go to the hybrid immediately. I mean, it seems like. The overwhelming. You know, the voice of the community was overwhelming that they want kids in school full-time. I mean, that said, I think. It's highly likely that that's how we start, but it may not be how we are the whole year. Um, just given what's, you know. The flux and that, you know, there's gonna be changes and there's gonna be. Spikes and peaks and valleys. And so, I mean, I think at least if we start in August with all kids there. And at some point we have to be out for a month or two, or, you know, at least we've had. You know, some period of time where they've built relationships with those teachers and they have. Um, you know, some base for. Learning then rather than, um, sort of start off with this sort of minimal contact. Um, so, you know, my feeling is try it and start that way and then we're gonna have to go with the flow as. As the situation changes, but, you know, at least we would have some days with those kids in actual classrooms.
Yeah, and you may add one more thing, the, um, the technology piece is gonna be really important even in-person. Um, because we have, especially with the dual-language schools and that kind of thing, they may need to stay in one classroom. And get that lesson in that classroom, you know, more virtually. Uh, we're gonna look at some things like vocabulary building and things that are a little bit more simple and don't need as much of the discussion and, and that kind of thing. So. We are gonna be using that technology more so, um, as different learning platforms in that synchronous asynchronous learning model with the flip classroom idea. Um, even if we're not in the hybrid model. And, and that's gonna help us assure that those cohorts stay separate.
That's because we, the teachers don't, it doesn't work out perfectly to have the teachers half and half kind of thing.
Well, and we're worried, honestly, we're worried that, uh, if a teacher or two get sick and they're. We have to have a way to provide, um, that teaching because we're not gonna pull a substitute in that's gonna be able to do native language Spanish literacy. Let alone somebody that's gonna wanna go into a classroom that's had exposure to COVID.
Yeah, it's messy. But, you know, thanks. Oh, I had one other question, um, just it's sort of related, um. Just about the calendar, like, did we look at? Um, you know, not having a week off in October, did we look at? Changing anything in the calendar, given that. You know, any. I don't know, it, it just seems like colleges have gone with more of a. You know, the more that we have them and then we let them go catch it somewhere, but we don't bring them back into the building. That, that seems to be the, sort of the tactic col- colleges are taking. Um, versus give you time off, let you go. Mix with other people or travel and then bring you back into the building.
We, we did not explore any of those alternative calendars. Uh, board has approved the, the calendar that we work with and we, we anticipate there's gonna be changes in it. That, that we can't control. So we're, we're, we're in a resort community. We're the first community in the state to, to see COVID. Uh, we're anticipating we'll see it again. So, uh, we. Any pre-planning we might do around the calendar, uh, it probably wouldn't have a lot of value because it's gonna be subject.
Fair enough.
I haven't heard from, uh, Mr. Steve Arcunas or.
Um, so I am gonna support the five days a week for elementary and middle. Um, since the community is, um, going for that and, um. However, I know there's a lot of parents, you know, the thirty percent that is not gonna be happy and might not agree with it. And so like I said in the work session, and I just wanna say it again, I urge the district to set up. A meeting, an informational meeting to talk about World Academy. I feel like the information is not out there. I don't know much about it. Um, so I think we should definitely. Talk about it in a meeting and give parents, um, the option. Because I'm gonna say probably a lot of families are gonna go for that if they know exactly how it works and what that all about. So if we could do that in both languages, that would be great and, um. I agree that we need to give the teachers a couple of days for planning for the new real or new normal, whatever. They call it. So. That's, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Scott Chirone?
I think that I chimed in on the, uh, additional planning days, which I support. And, um. And the five days a week at elementary for sure. And middle school, if it works out, I think middle school is gonna be a great experiment with, uh, with how it works. And, um. Probably those kids wanna get back in school five days a week and I think that's where we should start with the option that if it's not working out or if we see high infection rates, we'll have to try something different. Um, and let families know that. Especially with middle school kids, it would be, uh, more of an option to switch. Elementary school kids are a lot trickier. You just can't. Leave them unsupervised anywhere. And so they need to, parents need to know and, uh, and kids need to know where they're going. So it is messy and I, uh. Appreciate that there's a lot of unknowns, but I, I think we're on the right course with the way we're gonna start off the year and, uh. With the efforts we're gonna make and hopefully with all these multiple layers of protection, we can, uh, keep the virus out of our schools and. Stay focused on the business of learning. Uh, at Home State Peak, they have a good point on their, uh, their schools play a bit different. They may need to have a few, uh. Modifications or time schedule, which makes it tricky with getting siblings to school, but, uh. I'm sure they're working hard on those, those plans for their specific school as all schools are. You get enough feedback then?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the board's thoughtful questions, uh, posed to us before the meeting, uh, during and after. And this will, will help, uh, our team, uh, craft the final plan. We, we do intend to meet again with Teachers Association next Monday. Uh, to continue talking about working conditions and, uh, and, and put a little sharper point on some of these decisions. Uh, in association with the, uh, input from public health next week. So. We're, we're, we're well on our way to having a, a solid plan. Thank you.
So Phil, will the board have another chance to review the final plan before it goes out or, um? What does that look like since we're not meeting again for a month and we wanna get something public next week?
Uh, we, we could forward electronically drafts of materials and, and take your comments on those.
Right, and it's not an action item per se, right? We're not voting on to approve this plan. We're understanding that we are discussing in-depth. And like extraordinary lengthy depth, may I say this evening. Um, the plan which will be continued to evolve and will be, be, uh, a prize. Any changes, any, any significance? Over the next month and as the school year rolls in. Right? Is there? Anything you wanna add to that?
Oh, you're, I mean. You're right on. Uh, th- this will be a continuous effort. So we intend to provide updates to you. At each meeting about how things are going, what changes we need to make, updates on, on school situations, uh, closures as necessary, rolling closures. Uh, so yeah, thi- this will be, this will be a constant news, news item for the next year.
Any more questions about this, uh, draft at this point?
Is there any concern about high school kids that? Not having them in school. But then they're congregating outside of school. Um. You know, that at least if they're in school, we have some control over how far they are from one another and what they're up to. And given that their parents may not be home if they're back to work. You know, what do we do about, you know, will they be expected to be online and listening to a class where we'll know that they're actually? You know. Focused on school or do we have no idea where they'll be during that time, I guess?
In the event of a fully remote transition, there would be synchronous instruction time where they would be expected to be on, online and participating in classwork. In the hybrid model on the days that they're not in school, uh, they will have to-do lists, they will have tasks and. Uh, they'll have agendas and things that they need to accomplish during that day, but they'll have the ability to do that in a, in a time and a manner that, that works for them. Uh, but, you know, just, just as in, in, at every level, uh, we, we can't control what happens when they're not in school. We can only control what we can control. So if they're gonna play club sports, uh, if they're gonna be on athletic teams, if they're gonna be in Boy Scouts or church groups. They're, they're gonna be together a- at different times and different places. Um, we have to recognize that and, uh, and just focus on the areas that, that we can control.
Okay. We sort of can control. I, I, I'm not saying that it makes sense to go back full-time. I just. I just, I don't know, I worry about what they're doing when they're not at school on lots of levels, not just if they're getting COVID, but what else they're up to, so.
Yeah, valid concern. One we won't be able to resolve this evening though. Uh, any other questions on this before we move on to some of our other, um, items? Alrighty, so we got a little technical thing with the approval of a designated election official and participation in the coordinated election for fall 2020. The, uh, what is this? The deadline to certify ballot content is September 4th. So we would have to do this vote on the 3A, the second meeting in August. Uh, we don't have to do that tonight. We just have to approve Missy as the designated election official and, uh, at this time. Mr. Paul, any more details for it?
Correct. Attached is a resolution that assigns, uh, Missy Gerard, uh, the assistant to, uh, to the board and the superintendent in the role of designated election official for Eagle County School District. Uh, so basically she serves as the official, uh, who coordinates with the county clerk about issues related to elections. So for us, that means the ballot question, uh, to be on the ballot in November of 2020. Uh, we don't have any board seats open in this coming election cycle. Uh, we do however, have five seats open in 2021, so that'll be an exciting election year for our board. Uh, so you'll see two attachments, um, related to this. You'll see the formal resolution and you'll also see an election year calendar. And, uh, on that calendar, it's several pages long. But really the only two dates that we need to be aware of on there are July 24th is the last date to notify our county clerk in writing that we intend to participate in the 2020 general election, uh, which, which, uh, we, we have indicated we do for the purposes of renewing the 3A mill levy. Uh, and then on September 4th, we would have to, that's the deadline to certify ballot language. So in our meetings in August, we'll be focusing on, on designing that ballot language uh, to be certified on September 4th, at which point, uh, the, uh, the fair campaigning standards would, would be enacted. And it does, uh, require board action tonight to designate Missy in this capacity.
I move to approve resolution number 2021, 2020 dash 21 dash one as presented, designating Melissa Gerard as the election official for the district and participation in the coordinated election for fall 2020.
I second.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions on this item? Missy? And just remember to say your name before your vote, please.
Mr. Almanza?
Fernando Almanza, aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Kelly Alter, aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Kate Cottarella, aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Shelley Jarno, aye.
Dr. Long?
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Michelle Stecker, aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas?
Lucila T. Varcunas, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes seven zero.
Good, that one was easy. Now we have, moving on to another action item of the approval of two additional elementary testing days.
Hi, that's me. Yeah, thank you. So, um, as we've been talking about the need for teachers to have, um, more time either to prep or to understand their students, um, when we moved to remote learning in March of 2020, uh, we were unable to complete our spring assessments on our students in elementary school. And it's been about five months now. Um, it will be five months at least before the teachers are with the students again in person. So in a regular year, we generally have about 30-minute testing appointments for our students. Um, but due to such a long time between the assessments, we would really like to request that each elementary student will be able to, or a student be allocated one hour assessment appointment. Um, that is going to help, um, with the regular dibbles assessments that we need to administer. Um, and additionally, uh, we would like to do the ABR math assessment to get us a very close picture of where the students are in their math abilities and a social emotional check, um, with each child that will help us understand where they are and their readiness to learn. And a survey that we want to give parents in elementary school in paper or in person, um, that will ask them about their ability to be connected and what they would need to help their students be successful, um, in this upcoming school year. Uh, just try and get more of that personal touch, um, and, and get a better picture of what, um, the learning environments will be like at our, for our students at home. So right now, um, Phil had said that, that we're tight on some of our, um, seat time requirements for middle school and high school. But elementary, we are actually, um, still way above the state requirements. So even if seat time was not adjusted, um, right now, uh, it would reduce our contact days to 167 from 169. Um, but that will still leave us at about 131 hours above the minimum requirements, um, in the year for elementary students. Um, so at this point, we are asking that first week of the calendar year for the beginning of school this year, um, all four of those, uh, days, um, two additional to the prior two assessment days be used as assessment, um, periods for students and to get to know parents and the social emotional needs of the students for elementary this year.
Melissa, could you just clarify that last piece a little bit more? So instead of starting on when day one would be, it would be pushed back a few days for families or?
Yeah, we would do the assessment days first. Yeah. So any other questions about that?
And then just to confirm, so this would not impact pay for teachers? It would just be the couple of days instead of teaching their full classes? That would get pushed back two days, this would replace it?
Yeah, so, um, it, it would change the contact time that we were talking about with that other scenario that Phil was referring to earlier. Um, it would just change the, the, the contact time with students, but it would not change any teacher contracts or anything like that. And we've had a lot of parents, even in our survey, the parents were very concerned about, I don't know if my kid is ready to go on to the next grade, uh, you know, because of what had happened. And, you know, we've assured parents that we are able to work with wherever their students happen to be at this point. But this will just give us a, a more pinpoint measure. So we know what students have gained, what students have lost, um, and where to start the year as far as helping individualize that instruction for our elementary students.
I, I would say in light of the information that board members shared previously regarding your opinions on adding planning days, this, this vote right now might, uh, just be temporary. Uh, we'll probably be presenting a, another proposal in, in August at our first meeting that, that will add a, a few planning days at all levels. So, um, we, we might just, uh, we might just table this, uh, until, until our first meeting in August, at which time you'll get a more comprehensive proposal that includes nothing for all levels.
Just to clarify, you said planning before, but you mean testing at all levels? We need a few testing days, it would seem that.
The testing days would, would still be part of the plan at elementary, but we would be adjusting the schedule at all levels. So it might be a more comprehensive vote that you could do, uh, in that first meeting in August as opposed to, you know, i- if you want to approve this one now, that's, that's fine. Uh, just so elementary, uh, teachers have that peace of mind and, and can start planning. Uh, but I would anticipate, uh, another motion in, at the first meeting in August that, that might add a couple more days at all levels for planning purposes.
Well, and I believe that all, um, elementary teachers would need that additional planning time as well, right? They're getting the new information on their students and they're going to need time to plan, um, for what they have in their mix of, of student abilities. So we are predicting that we will have, um, a much higher number of students that are on read plans because, um, they will have had much more slide than in a normal year, um, and, and some other pieces like that. So they're going to have to plan for all that instruction and the interventions that need to happen to bring those students up as well.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any harm in going ahead and passing this one tonight so that elementary can start, uh, planning a testing schedule and, and working on the logistics of that. Uh, but, but we'll, we'll propose something a little more comprehensive in the next meeting.
So if we are expecting another, another one for us to approve later on, would it be fair to suggest asking for the whole deal from the get-go? Or is that something that is still reviewing and that's why it wasn't on this proposal?
We could, uh, thi- this proposal was in the board packet as of last Friday. And, um, we just met with the negotiations team this week. So those proposals to add planning days, we weren't able to get that on this board agenda because the packet was already published, uh, to the community. So, um, you, you, you're welcome to wait as, as well. E- either way, it works, works for me. I think it would probably be cleaner if we waited and did the whole package at once.
I think if nothing else, it's important for parents to be aware if they're working with childcare situations and things like that, um, to expect those four days, whether it's now or later for elementary. Because day camps will be closed, um, by then because they won't be expecting students anymore since school is scheduled to go back in session.
And would it make more sense to send those surveys to the parents before those two days? So that they already have the answers and they know what the general feeling of the classroom parent is? Like, why are we waiting for those surveys to be completed the day, that day?
I, I think a lot of them is because we feel like we're missing a big group of parents that don't complete the online surveys for us. And so that personal connection, I think, would make it, I think we could send it to them, a copy of it maybe in the assessment, when they get their assessment schedule, um, if we wanted to do that. Um, but I think some parents will be more apt to fill it out if it's in front of them and they don't have anything else to do while their students are doing their testing.
Missy, could I ask a technical question?
Of course.
Is it feasible that the board could amend the motion, uh, to extend the additional days to other levels at this meeting tonight? And, and designate those for either testing, training, or planning? And each level can utilize those days the way that they see best fit? And then we can address it tonight? Or is that too much of a difference from what was originally supposed to be?
Go ahead.
I, I, I don't know if that's equitable. Um, you know, because if we're adding other days to the other levels for planning and then elementary needs to use those for assessments, um, I, I don't think that's equitable to elementary teachers to be able to get prepared for the school year the same way.
Okay, it sounds like we have some discussions to do about this offline, so.
So just to be clear, for elementary, you're asking us for two days for teachers to get ready and two extra days for testing, so four days with kids where they're not going to be in school? Is that, am I understanding it correct?
I, I don't think we were clear about how, how many days beyond testing. Melissa, I would put that to you. Uh, we, about two days for testing for sure. How many days do you think elementary would need in addition, uh, at the point?
Yeah, right now, we're just asking to substitute two contact days for two assessment days. And based, the basic reason behind that would be, um, so we have a better understanding of how to meet the needs of the kids that are coming back right now. Uh, you know, because if they're in school and the teachers are trying to do that, it's going to take them a whole month, um, to get those assessments done for the students where they can get them done in two days.
And tho- those assessment days are, are, are bill to bill. I mean, it's, it's eight to four parent meetings. If we're talking about one-on-one, uh, teachers meeting with families, uh, it, they're, they're not going to have any planning time on those four days that they've set up all those meetings. So if we want to provide them additional planning time, it would need to happen beyond those two testing days. So the proposal would likely be two additional testing days at elementary and, and frankly, middle school has asked for those testing days as well. And then two additional days for planning, uh, at each level.
Middle school hoping for four days, two testing days and two, um, days in which they could meet with their parents. So, yeah, I'm sorry, that makes it more confusing, but.
We're going to have to talk about this offline, so.
Right, my concern is, uh, I'd like to know, have parents know what's going on as soon as possible. But again, our good singing with our theory of not putting out information and then changing it in two weeks. We may have to put out a communication and say, please be prepared for changes to the beginning of the school year calendar when you're planning your, like, end of summer trips and, uh, stay up to date, uh, as far as, because we do need to have, be sure there's equity, uh, amongst the planning and the testing. And they may need some time with high school students to figure out what's going on with that. Maybe we have testing and planning. Maybe CDE will come up with their recommendations before this so we'll know what we, uh, what our current constraints are. So I, I believe, you can stop me here, um, technically, if we, uh, we're not ready to vote on this, then what we do is we just do not make a motion. I will call for a motion and if nobody is comfortable with this at this point, no board member makes a motion, and then it is essentially, uh, left out there and we'll, uh, we'll come back to it in a month. But I would, uh, highly recommend that the staff communicates out to families the possibility because when we're meeting, but it is that the August 12th, we're awfully darn close to the start of school. And I'm not sure that's fair to families either.
Well, and it sounds clear that, um, this time is needed to do more assessments. So whatever kind of gets added onto it with scheduling adjustments, with, um, teacher training and planning, that could be sort of the next phase that we approve. But that's not ready to move forward with tonight. But, um, I mean, I'm comfortable making a motion because it sounds like this time is needed. And, um, like we said, even though, you know, specific dates might get shifted, at least it sets that expectation up for the teachers to be able to start preparing and, um, we can decide what we want to do with messaging with families. So I will make a motion, uh, to approve two additional elementary testing days to the 2020, 2021 academic calendar as presented.
I second that.
Excellent. Are there further comments or questions about this? Uh, are we going to need to schedule a special meeting and later in July for, for bigger problems? That's always possible, especially if there's remote people being away and.
Yeah, I, I think considering the, the changes that were, are being proposed and, and the proximity to the start of the school year, we're going to need a special meeting. So it could be very brief, it could be just this question, uh, and, and we can, uh, we'll talk about that at our Monday meeting with leadership team and, and work out with your schedule to coordinate something so we can get, get this changed, uh, soon in the local community.
I think that's a good plan. I, I support that. With the, just the, uh, once you get it tighter from the negotiations with the teachers union and with any information from the CDE, but by, uh, taking this vote right now, we're at least putting it out there that these, uh, calendar changes are on the horizon and we're going to get it figured out as soon as possible. Is there, are there any other comments or questions about this call? That takes us to Missy.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Almanza?
Fernando Almanza, aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Kelly Alter, aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Kate Cottarella, aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Shelley Jarno, aye.
Dr. Long?
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Michelle Stecker, aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas?
Lucila T. Varcunas, aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Just when we were all looking forward to a full month off, we will be scheduling a special meeting for the third week in July. Um, but it will be a short one. And I think it's, uh, important for the education and the planning, uh. So this brings us to now another action item and Chelsea Gerard is presenting.
Good evening. I know you guys have had a long night, so I will keep it short and sweet. Um, I'm here to present the state interest-free loan program. And as in prior years, the district intends to participate in the state interest-free cash flow loan program. Um, last year, the district borrowed 15.8 million from the state. And in the year 2021, we expect to borrow 16,204,824 million. Um, the resolution is the same that you guys have proved in prior years. And that's all I have.
Right, does anyone have any questions about this? We have gone through this exercise, we do it every year, and we borrow the money from the state and we pay it all back. But we do need to approve it as a formality, as a resolution, as an official resolution.
I move to approve resolution number 2020-21-2, authorizing Eagle County Schools' participation in the state interest-free loan program, and to borrow up to 16,204,824 dollars for cash flow purposes.
I second. Shelley, seconds.
Excellent. Any further comments or questions from the Board? Missy?
Mr. Almanza.
Fernando Almanza, aye.
Mrs. Alter.
Kelly Alter, aye.
Mrs. Caccarella.
Kate Caccarella, aye.
Mrs. Jarno.
Shelley Jarno, aye.
Dr. Long.
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. Stecker.
Michelle Stecker, aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas.
Lucila T. Varcunas, aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Great, excellent. And another action item for this evening, business and operations, approval of master lease agreements with Eagle County for Eagle County School District employees at 210 Castle Peak. Sandy Musler presenting.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is actually really exciting for us, as you know, we've been working on the employee housing master plan over the last year or so, and it was finalized late this spring. And one of the initial suggestions or recommendations as part of that plan was to establish some master leases throughout the county. And so this will be our first opportunity to do that, and it's in conjunction with the Eagle County Housing and Development Authority, where they have built 210 at Castle Peak, which is some housing that's in Eagle, right adjacent to the Rush Creek Elementary School. And they are almost done with construction and will begin being available in August 1st of 2020. Within the agenda item, you can see the description of the units and the different options that they have based on the amount per square foot for the totals on those. The one good thing about these units is that they're actually being offered rents at 80% of AMI, and that will allow these units to become a little more affordable than most places that are accessible at this point. They, the units will be done under the property management of the Housing and Development Authority, and it would be, and I have to say, this has changed since the legal interaction on this, but employees would actually need to be signing a lease directly with Eagle County Schools, and Eagle County Schools would sign the master lease with the county. And that is why we do not have a final agreement in your packet for tonight, for your review, because our attorneys are working through that process, and with the July 4 holiday, it's been taking a little longer than expected. But we did need to get this on the agenda and get it before you as soon as possible because with the units coming available in the beginning of the school year, we really wanted to make sure that we could have approval to enter into this agreement so that we can start marketing it to our employees and getting them lined up to move in as soon as possible. So I apologize that that is not in there yet, but again, it's just kind of that delay of not having a meeting until August 12th because we want to get this out as soon as possible. So at this point, if it is okay with you guys to change the recommended action to allow approval by either Phil as a superintendent or myself as the CLO to be able to sign the agreement, but only upon legal agreement by our council representative. And then you did have a draft in your executive session, so you could see what the majority of the language was. There would just be a few tweaks on that. But by having the employees sign the lease directly with us, it allows us to have a little more flexibility upon separation of employment from the district than they would have to work through that process under our current housing policies. And then everything within that agreement would also refer to making sure they follow the 210 at Castle Peak leasing agreement, and so it would cover both areas. And that's the language that they're working through as that final portion of that agreement.
I just have a question. Sorry if you already said, but, so it says that we would have five of them, but it doesn't indicate, like, which sizes? Can that change by what we need, or is it that we have to designate the ones that are ours?
No, it can change based on the need and what's available. So if the first five employees that get in there might have the one, one bed, one bath, there were three of them, one might be a one bed in the additional space, and then the other one could be a two-bedroom. And so then if we have those leases and then they end up having one come vacant, and we have one vacant, and they're different, we can, we have to flex our money to work with them based on what the current need is.
Okay.
So it'd be like, really, any other apartment complex, as a unit becomes available, they can put it out there. And then if they don't have anybody within the county or any other organization they're working with, and it becomes available, then we could actually even have access to additional ones, where our employees could do that outside of our master lease also.
I move to approve to enter into five master lease agreements with Eagle County for Eagle County School District employees at 210 Castle Peak.
Oh, sorry.
Is that a sufficient enough motion, or do we need to add the phrase pending legal approval by the superintendent and the CEO?
I think that's helpful to make sure that's in there.
Can you add that, Mrs. Jarno, please?
Okay. I move to approve to enter into five master lease agreements with Eagle County for Eagle County School District employees at 210 Castle Peak, pending legal approval of the contracts?
Oh, sorry.
The district.
Sorry, unauthorized what?
Phil Quallmott, Superintendent. You got it. It's almost done.
No, but what do you, I mean, what does the superintendent need to do? He just needs to approve?
To sign on behalf of the Board.
Oh, oh, you're right, right. And we're giving, we approved the superintendent to sign on behalf of the Board.
Thank you.
One second again.
All right, perfect. Thank you. We want to make sure this can happen, though, while we are out of session at any time. So any further questions or concerns about this? No? Missy?
Okay. Mr. Almanza.
Fernando Almanza, aye.
Mrs. Alter.
Kelly Alter, aye.
Mrs. Caccarella.
Kate Caccarella, aye.
Mrs. Jarno.
Shelley Jarno, aye.
Dr. Long.
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. Stecker.
Michelle Stecker, aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas.
Lucila T. Varcunas, aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Excellent. All right, we just have one more item, and we probably don't have a whole lot of brain power left for this one, though, which is agenda planning, the monitoring report GPA, and we have the Year at a Glance agenda available for everybody to look at. One thing that we did add that we haven't had, we added as a standing item to our regular agenda, is COVID planning accommodations as public interest. We felt that was more transparent. We were sort of hitting it in the intro reports, but we will be talking about it for the foreseeable future, so it's going to be a standing agenda item, and we'll just kind of hit that in regular session under public interest. And I was thinking about a few other, we have other important topics, we need to pull them from the superintendent report and tag them, I think, as agenda items because of the great feature in Board Docs, you can search items. So if there's people out there wanting to go back into our meetings and see what specifically they want to find out about, it needs to be listed as, like, you know, a topic, so it's a searchable thing. So that could be something we can work on adding. I'm not sure what topics those might be, but...
Could I add that we're approving the monitoring report tonight? The Year at a Glance is a draft document. That's going to be adjusted throughout the year as incidents come up or as board members have interest in something and they want to add it to the Year at a Glance, we can certainly adjust that. So the only thing that we're approving tonight is the monitoring report that says that we have an agenda for the year and that it's inclusive of elements like school improvement planning, budget elements, like all those statutory pieces that you need to make sure happen as a board. But we can always make adjustments to the Year at a Glance. That is not necessarily set in stone.
Exactly. There will be definitely adjustments made to this as it goes along, but I wanted the whole board to see that, you know, the sort of, we have the year laid out, and we're going to take those first four topics and plug them into meetings as we go, and if there's anything else that you see that's missing, this may be not the time, if anyone hasn't had the time to really look at it and have comments on it now, we'll talk about it, or we can just move on. But we want to be sure that everybody knew that that year-long vision exists, and that's what we work from as we pull then the agenda for the meeting and the next meeting as we're working, you know, closer to the meeting time.
Well, I mentioned it in work session, but if we could get a brief update from Ann on how rolling out some of the social emotional work at least, and/or plans for how to have impact come of the Safe and Resilient Schools training on more of a building level, or what kind of the plan is there for the next meeting, I would be really interested in that. And I'm sorry, I did not mean to speak on behalf of the Board earlier, but I would love to see that.
Anybody else now with questions on the year-long plan? We can just move. Any questions? I'll move to approve the monitoring report for governance policy GPA, agenda planning as presented.
Second.
Second by Kelly. Further comments or questions? When you get some free time, you want to look over it, dive into it a little deeper, and send me your feedback? I'd love it. Missy?
Okay. Mr. Almanza.
Fernando Almanza, aye.
Mrs. Alter.
Kelly Alter, aye.
Mrs. Caccarella.
Kate Caccarella, aye.
Mrs. Jarno.
Shelley Jarno, aye.
Dr. Long.
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. Stecker.
Michelle Stecker, aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas.
Lucila T. Varcunas, aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Great. Our personnel list was approved on consent and is included in Board Docs, if anybody's interested in that. And then we have feedback and evaluation. Does anyone have any comments or comments on the terms of governance policies? We hit some. We were very thorough in talking about our plan to get kids back into buildings. Goals and mission of the district is to produce global-ready learners, and I think we're working really hard towards that in these tricky times. I hope we survive the summer, and if we make progress, this meeting impacted student learning on a great level. Anybody else got any comments or questions for me here at the end to close up?
The only thing I'm going to say really quickly, now it's late, is, I mean, I've been pretty impressed with the thoroughness of the plan, and, you know, a shout-out to the DO. I know how much work it is, and when you look at all these things, it just seems like so overwhelming, like, I get overwhelming looking at all the things that have to happen to get kids back in school. So I would just like to give a shout-out because I think it's pretty impressive, and, you know, everybody is really rising to the occasion, and it's just, it's beyond, to me, overwhelming. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you, guys, for all the hard work.
Anyone else? I think we all say ditto on that. Thank you. Yeah, nice job with this presentation and a good example of teamwork. So we will be in contact with board updates and a time for a short additional meeting in July to approve the minor changes to the start of the school year that are going to reflect additional planning and testing opportunities to make sure that we get everybody on the right track at the beginning of the year right away, instead of having to take a month to get all that figured out. So be checking your emails and texts, and enjoy the month of July. Thank you all very much for being here. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.